And welcome to the Monday, November 26th, meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. Will everyone please would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, alright. I'll make notice that the board, everyone seated up here, met in executive session prior to this meeting, and we discussed matters of personnel. Alright, consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda this evening? Staff, is there anything you'd like to pull from the consent agenda? The public, anything you'd like to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, may I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through D?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, items A through D, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to nothing. Alright, public comment? Like to invite the public up to speak. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Heather Gill, I just wanted to shed a light on just a few things regarding stormwater, and it's just nice to do it at 7:00 PM and not 11:00 PM when a lot of residents aren't here, everyone's exhausted, just some feedback moving forward, just to make our township better. The current and previous BOP, Board of Commissioners, has approved several projects for stormwater, repair and replace, pollutant reduction projects, water quality, these are all great projects. But what the board hasn't done is move forward with a capital improvement project for flood reduction. The Stormwater Committee was enacted in order to assist the township and make recommendations for stormwater flood reduction projects. There was a fee that was implemented. To date, the Stormwater Committee, we don't even have enough members for a quorum, hence question where we move forward with the fee and our stormwater recommendation. At the last board meeting, Commissioner Larkin asked me why we weren't proposing projects in the North Wayne area when residents were crying out. I respectfully would like to answer his questions, as well as outline some of the issues that occurred regarding projects in the North Wayne area. The previous board directed Stormwater not to recommend any projects in the North Wayne Basin area. The board had told our committee, the Stormwater Management Committee, that they were going to work things out with the school board on a property that the school board owned in order to move forward with the North Wayne Basin. Approximately $150,000 was spent on a design on a property that the township did not own. Although the Stormwater Committee has talked to residents of the North Wayne Basin, we met with them several times, we understand the flooding that occurs there, we agree that there is a problem, and we recognize that something needs to be done, but we were told not to do projects and that they would be worked out, which has never happened. In summary, we would like a project in North Wayne Basin, and we're looking forward to discussing the Poplar Avenue project. However, I question how to move forward with stormwater recommendations. There are things that have occurred with the previous board, allocation and shifting of funds for the North Wayne Basin after a budget was approved occurred, and having residents go door to door to the Banbury Francis Way project that, in order to get a consensus not to move forward with the Banbury Francis Way. So there were people in North Wayne going door to door saying, "Don't go forward with this," which is really disconcerting. The township-wide assessment yielded several stormwater projects. We just happened to choose the Banbury Francis Way to reduce flooding, water quality of a rain garden, it would increase safety, and it was an area the township that the board directed us, didn't say we couldn't do a project in this area. So I just wanted to provide feedback to Mr. Larkin that we know that there's flooding in North Wayne, and that one of the reasons why we picked Banbury Francis Way was because we were told not to do anything until that project was worked out. So, in summary, we went to the board, we asked to start this project, again, the Banbury Francis Way project, we met with the residents, we pulled back the design from a 25 to a 10-year storm, and not all residents were on board, but a lot of them were, and it's just a shame that we couldn't move forward with this project. And I question why we couldn't move forward with the Poplar Avenue and Banbury Francis Way project. They both seem like projects in an area that are prone to flooding, and why we couldn't move forward with one. One thing that, with both, one thing that was disconcerting was an email that I saw from Commissioner Larkin to the constituents stating that undertaking a project like Banbury Francis Way would mean sacrificing North Wayne projects. As a result, residents on Poplar, Willow, Farm and Beachtree have been campaigning against Banbury Francis Way. Really? Is this what our township is about, that we're pitting neighborhood against neighborhood? I would like to come up with a solution, either on the Stormwater Committee or off, that we could all work together and not pit one neighborhood against another neighborhood, and come up with true stormwater solutions. In my 23 years of designing stormwater management projects, flood-prone areas have high water tables, as in the North Wayne area. They do not yield soils that are acceptable with percolation rates that are not adequate to do stormwater projects.
Heather, I'm sorry, one minute.
Yes, thank you. I just want to come up with a way with the township, whether it's through the Stormwater Committee, whether it's with township staff to move forward, not only with projects like Banbury Francis Way, but other projects, and how we could work better together, and to enact several projects in the township. And I just wanted to say to Commissioner Clark and to Booker, these weren't even his ward, and they voted for the projects, they saw the merit in the Banbury Francis Way. I know I'm beating a dead horse, but I just felt that Mr. Larkin had brought up a topic of why we were ignoring North Wayne residents when we really weren't. We really know that it's a flood-prone zone, and that there could have been benefits to moving forward with both projects.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there any additional public comment?
Good evening, Chris Todd with the Wayne Business Association. Hey, I just want to come up and thank you for the free parking in Wayne the next five Saturdays, I believe, or previous one. It's always a great help, the merchants really appreciate it. There we go. And Shop Small Saturday was another great success. Town was packed, I think everybody got in and out before the storm hit, so. Also, want to thank you and the Radnor Township along with the Police Department for Christmas in Wayne this Friday coming up, please come out, see what it's like if you haven't been to one, even let me know, I'll get you on the mic, you can make some announcements, okay? Everybody loves that. But 5:30 to 8:00 this Friday, Radnor Firehouse is open, we'll have carriage rides, and once again, Vernon Odom, Ward 1 resident, will come and make the announcement, and to all our sponsors as well. And then don't forget, Saturday, there's the parade, and Santa will be at the Wayne Hotel, as usual, so. And lastly, I just want to remind everybody, because I saw the budget was on the thing, I'm sure you guys enjoyed reading that Wayne Impact Study that I gave you last time. I'm hoping everybody's remembering that the WBOD brings a lot of money to town, and to be able to start Streetscape Plan would be a tremendous help, especially in the upcoming year. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Chris. It was great on Saturday, I got some good bargains.
Good, yeah, perfect.
So we'll see you Friday night?
Yes, you will.
Very good, thank you. Thanks for all you're doing. Any other pub comment? Hey, Annie, how are you?
Hi, Annie Lepley, Executive Director of the Radnor Memorial Library. First, I'd like to invite everyone to our fifth annual Else for the Shelves 5K this Saturday, December 1st. We will be racing through West Wayne, starting right outside the library, so you still have time to register. Also, I am here tonight to talk to you about the budget, just for a quick moment. The library really would like to extend our thanks for the difficult work that you are all doing on the 2019 budget. We know that you have a lot of competing interests, and at your last meeting, there was some discussion about the use of reserves to cover operating expenses. So I just wanted to clarify that the library is anticipating needing to use some of our own reserves to meet our 2019 operating budget. So even with the increase that we asked for, that 3% increase, we're anticipating using almost $100,000 in our own reserves to meet our operating needs. So we would like to encourage you to consider whatever increase you might be able to provide the library, so that we don't have to consider doing things like cutting library hours of service, cutting back our programs, or our collection budget for the 2019. So we appreciate all that you're doing, and I just wanted to make sure that that was understood, so thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Any other public comment this evening? Alright, we will move on to appointments to various boards and commissions. Commissioner Clark.
Alright, so we have two proposed appointments tonight. The first one is, and both of whom we've interviewed for these positions, so for the first one, I will move for the appointment of Mr. Joseph Reiser to Carfac. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, and is there any commissioner comment on this appointment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? Alright, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of the appointment of Mr. Joseph Reiser to Carfac, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, that passes seven to nothing. The second proposed appointment is Mr. Lane Vines to the Board of Health. With that, I will move for the appointment of Lane Vines to the Board of Health. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. And any commissioner comment on this appointment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? Alright, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of the appointment of Lane Vines to the Board of Health, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Passes seven to nothing. Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Sewer rent review. Mr. White, I'll throw this over to you.
Sure, thank you. I think we'll pick up where we left off a week ago. For the folks watching at home and have been paying attention to the budget process, the board has held two public hearings on the budget, the second one being last Monday, where we spent quite a bit of time on the general fund and sanitary sewer fund, and where we ended up last time with the sanitary sewer rent was kind of mid-conversation when I think we just ran out of evening to continue discussing it. So, Ian, if you could switch over to my laptop. While this is loading up onto the big screens... Try to make that as big as possible. So what we had talked about, just in high-level summary with the sanitary sewer fund, is going back to 2014 through 17, in each of the years, we've had a negative net revenue or a deficit situation where we have spent down the cash balance that was in that fund, to the point where we got to 2018, and going back to 2017 as well, with some emergency unplanned projects that required a significant amount of cash. The board completed a transaction to borrow $4.5 million to help replenish the fund, to help offset those capital projects, and in doing so, helping the sewer fund return some money back to general. But what exists in the sanitary sewer fund is a continued operational deficit that needs to be plugged or filled in in some way. We had talked about a couple different rate structures last Monday. The Board of Commissioners, a year ago, adopted, when they adopted the sewer rent for 2018, they had also adopted increases for 2019 and 2020 in each year of 10%. So when we were putting the forecast together for the sanitary sewer fund, that is the rate projection that we used, and that's where things stand now. Later on in the agenda tonight, there's the introduction of the ordinance that would set the 2019 sanitary sewer rate. Right now, it's blank, so when we get to that agenda item, we'll need direction from the board on what rate you would like to see in the ordinance for next year. So as things stand now, with the 10% increase for 2019 factored in, and again, that 10% was based off of what the board adopted a year ago, or recommended a year ago, I should say, since prior boards can't obligate future boards. This is what the numbers look like. We would still have roughly a $2 million shortfall in the fund. It's a little bit misleading because of the $4.5 million that we're going to deposit in December, because almost all that $2 million, for next year anyway, is going to be tied up in capital projects that we borrowed for. So for 2019, the increase would help bridge the gap to hopefully a broader discussion and a little bit more of a long-term financial fix for the sanitary sewer fund. But for tonight's purposes, and what this discussion item on the agenda is for, is to allow us to get to a point where we can fill in the blank on the ordinance that'll be up later on in the agenda, as it relates specifically to the sanitary sewer fund.
Okay, is that it?
From my part, yes.
Okay. Any questions remaining from our discussion last week? From the commissioners? No?
Yeah.
Alright.
I mean, are we going to review anything else that we did? Or you're done? This is the presentation?
Well, that was the introduction to the conversation.
Okay, alright.
Anticipating some dialogue now.
Well, the main, the first, the question is, why not go through the projects that were at least recommended by the manager in this budget, which are not included, and then the second category, which is not included and not recommended?
Are you talking about projects for sewer?
No, I'm talking about projects for this budget year.
Well, we're...
It's a sewer.
Yeah, we're talking about the capital budgets next.
Yeah, we're talking sewer.
We're doing the sewer right now, so. That is correct. Yeah, that's next up.
Well, how about, could we review the projects then that were completed and will be covered by the note borrowing, the private bank loan that we have in place? And also talk about the timing for the spend-down of that, or for the, or for the taking the money under that credit facility? What's the schedule for the drawdown on that?
I'm looking for the file, so bear with me just a sec.
Wait, we reviewed this last week, didn't we review this last week? Yeah.
We did step through it, yes.
So, on that note, I know that it's planned to be leveled debt service, but when will we take the full amount under that credit facility?
Alright, after that dramatic pause, here's the file. So we currently have project expenses, items that we've actually spent money on, roughly $2.1 million. I ran this report roughly three weeks ago, so I would suspect that that $2.1 is going to be a little bit higher now. But in terms of drawdown, as soon as the loan closes, I would anticipate drawing down on that amount, whatever amount we've actually spent. And then the remaining amount, we have $1.7 million in projects that have already started in one form or another, in terms of either just the engineering piece or actually replacing pipe, that's what the $1.73 million number is. As those expenses are actually spent down, or as we start receiving invoices on those, we'll draw down on the remainder of the loan to the point, up until we hit the $4.5 million.
What was the, was $2.1? And one point, so that's only $3.8, so what about that other $700,000?
Yeah, in addition to the projects, these projects that have already started in one form or another, in the sanitary sewer capital plan, there are some other projects that have been identified that would eat up the rest of that $4.5 million. And these projects have not been approved yet by the board, but they're projects that have been identified as necessary in one way or another.
So when do you plan, what's your schedule or your current belief as to the drawdown on the $1.7 and then the subsequent $700? Will it be in 2019, or will it be subsequent to that?
Yeah, the $1.7, I'm 100% certain we'll draw down on that in the first probably six months of 2019, maybe a little bit longer, depending on, the bigger projects may take longer. But I would anticipate having drawn down on the whole $4.5 million by either the end of 2019 or early 2020 at the latest. And the only delay there is the time it takes to get the engineering work done before they can actually start making the in-ground repairs.
And will that change the amortization and the debt service schedule?
It might have an insignificant impact to the amortization schedule that was included in the note ordinance. We had, when we built that amortization schedule, we had kind of factored the timing of the drawdowns into it. So what is certain is that if the note stays in place for its entire term, which is 10 years, that the debt service over those 10 years would be level. So if we...
That's my question, because we talked about, my understanding was at closing, you would draw down on the full $4.5 million, but then we talked about, well, we'll draw, as you get invoices, you'll do that, so that would mean you have to recalculate that whole debt service schedule, wouldn't it?
It would, but when we were finalizing the RFP, we had built into it an immediate $2 million drawdown, and then another $2.5 over a year and a half, two years. So that was factored in when they put the amortization schedule together. So we're going to line up pretty close to that. There will be, the numbers won't be exactly the same, but they also, they won't be significantly different either. And as we talked about, not only when the bond, or the note ordinance was adopted, but last week a little bit too, the reason why we set it up that way is because of the lag in engineering time for some of the projects, and we didn't want to borrow money and pay interest on projects that weren't ready to be installed yet.
Bill, this will leave us with no reserves?
This will leave us with limited reserves.
And then 2020 will be in the same shape?
Well, yeah.
A little less, but...
2020 has some other things going on that we're hoping to get into a lot more detail next year when we talk about the overall maintenance of the system itself, but even if we take out the additional items in terms of staffing and equipment that we'll talk about next year with that, the capital load alone jumps up to about 4.3 in new projects, over half of that being skunk hollow by itself. So yeah, I mean, we'll be in the same position where we're trying to balance operationally and capital-wise what we want the rate to cover, or what rate we need it to be at to cover all of these things.
So how did you come to a 10% increase? Is that coincide with the additional expense from the debt service for the notes, or is that not matching that?
The 10% increases from 17 to 18, and then again for next year into 20, were, and I'm going off recollection, it was, I think the board recognizing that some rate adjustments were necessary, but wanted to take steps towards getting to a rate that better covers what the system needs, instead of taking one big bite at it at once.
Well, why not, if we're going to increase, why not increase in an amount equal to the debt service allocated among all sewer rent payers? That would be less than 10%, wouldn't it?
It would most likely be less than 10%, but the problem is that the rate as exists today doesn't cover today's operational costs. Between what we spend with our public works crew and the $4 million that we pay to RHM annually, we struggle to meet those costs with our current rate. So anything that we spend on debt and capital beyond that is difficult for the rate to cover.
What impact has the Villanova project had on this? Is that built in? Remember, for Villanova, the new dorms are going to be connected to the RHM system, and the old dorms are going to be taken and redirected to the Lower Marion system. I don't know if that's the same RHM or different sewer authority. But is that built in, and is there any effect here?
Yeah, well, the one effect that's a known number is the amount that we paid to Lower Marion to send that sewer water that way. What, that, so that, it's a set number of properties that are identified, and we know the exact water consumption of those properties, so that's a fixed number. What is a little bit tougher to quantify with the overall program is the offset, or the water reduction from the properties that, coming off of our RHM flow. And I don't want to, I don't want to say anything incorrectly, so Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, when we had the discussion about the Villanova flow, we knew that we'd be paying Lower Marion a little bit more because of sending the water that way, but we would have an offset locally from the reduction of the water from those properties. What's difficult to nail down is, with all of the other changes going on within our flow, the biggest of which is probably the I and I, it's difficult to nail down with absolute precision where those offsets are at. Steve, am I getting close?
You're spot on, Mr. White. The estimated reduction in flows was around 22,000 gallons per day, but as Mr. White said, that can be, the net reduction township-wide can be different, based on the weather, infiltration, the condition of our infrastructure. But he is correct, so there is a net reduction in flows based on what's coming out of the dorms and what was switched over to Lower Marion.
So where it leaves us, I guess maybe to try to answer the question, is it leaves us with, when we predict, try to predict what revenue might be, is what we talked about way back when we first started the budget process, and trying to nail down what we think water consumption will be in 2018, which will be the basis of what Aqua sends us and we bill off of for 2019.
I think that the difficulty that I'm having, and perhaps some of the constituents, while we recognize that there may be a reduction in the flow to the RHM and the Radnor system as a result of that project, how do we know that the payments going out to LM are going to be covered by the revenue received in respect of the new connection? And if we don't know that, could it be that we actually increase the deficit in operating, and what are we going to do if that is the case?
So for the properties that we are paying Lower Marion for, again, that's, that is a specific known calculation, we know all of the elements of that number, we know the specific water usage, and this is all done after the fact, so it's not like we're trying to predict the water or water flow and pay Lower Marion in advance, this is all done in arrears, so we know the exact water consumption from those properties, we've billed and collected on those, and then are sending the money over to Lower Marion. We've billed and collected on those and then are sending the money over to Lower Marion. And that's all spelled out in the agreement.
Well, my question was though, how do we know that we're not increasing the deficit as a result of this arrangement?
Yeah, I don't know how to answer that other than to say for the properties that were, that are included in that agreement, we know with absolute certainty, the amount that we are billing and collecting on those properties, that is all that we are giving to Lower Marion. So there, it's a, it's a pass-through. There is no, it would not be increasing our deficit in the fund because every dollar we collect on that is what we're sending over to Lower Marion.
But what about the revenue that we're receiving in respect of the new flow that's coming to the Radnor system? That will be predicated on the water usage, which could be down. Therefore, the amount removed and paid over could be more than the revenues received and therefore putting Radnor in a deficit position.
And the flow to RHM will be correspondingly reduced, Rich?
Yeah, so that would, so if, yeah, if, that's exactly...
The flow would be reduced, but remember we're measuring, we're billing on the water consumption, not the flow.
Well, this is, yeah, that is true. So, but that scenario could exist with any property in Radnor, not just unique to the Villanova development.
Well, what was unique to Villanova was we changed the law to provide them with a special right to build. So I don't know why we would risk going into, to a negative position in respect of that. Going on to the proposed increases, what is the proposal for the 10% increases? And so what have you laid out? What can the public expect? We had a 10% increase in the sewer rent fee. Last year, you're proposing right now, another 10% this year. And what about the next year? How many, how far out in the future does this go and what is the, what's the plan?
So what was adopted by the board last year were three years of 10% increases. So the first one was for 2018. That was built out earlier this year. The second one is, would be built out in the spring of '19 and the third in 2020. But as, as we discussed last year and I mentioned earlier, that was last year's board's recognition of the larger problem and, you know, their vote on how to fix it or how to start taking measures to fix it.
And will those 3%, 10% increases fix it?
Yeah, looking at the numbers, I would say no, but as we discussed several times during this budget process, the intention is to take a much closer look at the entire sanitary sewer system in 2019, earlier in the year, and actually develop a plan on how to fix it, both physically and financially. We weren't trying to build any of those assumptions into the 2019 budget because we knew it wasn't realistic, given where we're at in the calendar and what the numbers were looking like.
And we're still waiting, I mean, we have the assessment where you guys are going to be bringing forward the plan to do the complete assessment, correct?
Yes.
Could change. I mean, right now you're talking about doing the, doing a project over at Skunk Hollow. I mean, that may change based on the assessment and something else may become a priority, correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of unknowns right, right here.
So if we have unknowns, why not keep the tax or the rental rate as it is until we get closer to or actually know all of the known unknowns and then address increases to meet the, the plan at that point instead of just increasing 10% per year, which was an arbitrary number the board came up with last year?
It wasn't an arbitrary number at all. Bill put the figures up in front of us, which would have indicated we needed 20% last year or 25%. It was a big number and we said, no, let's work our way into it. And during the first quarter, second quarter this year, we are going to be looking at capital projects, including stores. And that'll help us lay out for the next 2020 and onward.
I'm sorry, John.
Well, my question was, in light of that, because we did pick an arbitrary number last year, which you said won't, won't fix the problem, why not leave it where it is and then find out what we need to fix the problem and then schedule increases commensurate with that need at a later date, not this year?
So Bill, are you going back right now and readjusting? So what you had in there included the 10% increase for this year and we still showed an over $2 million deficit, correct?
Right. So the, with the projection in water consumption, which I always qualify it with that because that's, that's a difficult number to nail down, but with that estimate, the 10% would generate roughly a half a million dollars in revenue, in additional revenue. And what I've got highlighted right now are our known, our known costs between operations, the debt service and our payment to RHM. Those three by itself, without a single additional capital project being added, is 5.8, 5.8 million. And at today's rate with no increase, the revenue estimate is 5.2. So it puts the fund at a significant deficit.
And I don't think there's anyone up here that doesn't think we're going to have some significant capital projects coming out. I mean, we're, what have we been hearing all along, that the pipes are over 100 years old and, I mean, there are going to be significant projects coming out of that that we're still not even going to have the money for.
Well, again, as I've demonstrated, we did approve borrowing of 4.5 million. We have 1.7 million in projects that will be coming, payments made over the next six months.
But we had to pay back 2.1.
And then we have 700,000, which should be enough to tide us over until we get a better assessment. And with the numbers you have right now for 2018, 5.2 versus the 5.8, what would that leave the ending cash? That would still leave 721,000 in the, in the fund, in addition to the 700,000 that we have available under the credit facility. So again, my view would be to leave the rates as they are this year and then identify the scope of the need through additional analysis and then develop a plan to address that need when those unknowns are, become clear.
So two quick observations on that. First, our, we pay RHM quarterly and so at 4 million, it's roughly a million dollars per quarter. At this, with this, we, at 721,000 in reserves, we would be running, we would have difficulty on a cash flow basis meeting that fourth quarter payment. The second thing is, is that 721,000, if we had a single pipe break on us next year and we have one project that we weren't anticipating, that, that money will be gone and we'll be right back in the same situation a year from now where the general fund is subsidizing the sewer fund. Because keep in mind, the four and a half million, almost all of it's already spoken for and that little, a couple hundred thousand difference between what's already spoken for are identified in known projects. So I, if, if a pipe breaks early enough in the year, we can adjust, but if we start down the road of repairing known projects, then that, that'll exhaust the four and a half million and the fund will be out of cash.
I thought you said we weren't going to spend the 700,000 excess until 2020.
Yeah, well...
So, I mean, that money presumably would be there.
But it wouldn't be there to cover cash flow to pay RHM. We would not use debt money to do that.
Right, but, but we could, we could take care of that as we address and find out about the unknowns and assess the needs.
Can we move on? We have a lot of stuff on the agenda.
Actually, we don't have that much on the agenda. But what's, Bill, what is the, what is the Skunk Hollow project for next year for 4 million, 4.2 million?
Well, the Skunk Hollow piece is 2 million of that 4.2, but I'll let Steve explain the project itself.
Commissioner Booker, I don't know if you recall, it was noted in Mr. White's first table, there was, we had an emergency project at Skunk Hollow. We had a pipe that had collapsed. So we repaired that pipe and we stopped the leak across the creek, but there currently is the old concrete encasement, which sticks above the creek. And the fix was basically inserting a lower, a smaller diameter sleeve in the trunk line. So this is our trunk line that takes flow to RHM. The project that we really need to do, DEP wants us to get that, it's similar to Rolls-Royce Run, but on a much bigger scale. Melior is in the process of design. We need to lower that, which is going to require us to go back several runs uphill and downhill to get the grade to be under the stream.
You're going to lower it, you mean reduce the invert elevation to a...
So that it's below stream level.
And right now it's at stream level?
It's actually above stream level. So this is a, and my recommendation is a must-need project. This is also our trunk line. It conveys millions of gallons of sewage a day. Needs to be done. It needs to be brought back to its original ID because we have a sleeve in there. And we have to do stream bank restoration as part of our permit, which we're not at yet, but it's all in the design. It's a big project. It's large-scale pipe, but does have to be done. My recommendation is that it has to be done. It's not an absolute.
Well, there you go. That's, and that'll be next year then?
Right now it's in design. We're figuring that construction, when that design is fully complete and we can have a great, an estimated probable cost of construction, we would ask, we would request that in the budget for 2020.
What's the linear foot of that?
Okay.
It's like 1,000 feet, something like that.
It's a thousand, 1,000 feet? And that's not pressure, that's just gravity?
It's gravity.
Okay.
But that, that'll be covered in our, you're doing, Roger's working on an assessment of the whole, whole line where you're going to, you're going to prioritize for next, for 2019, right? So that'll be included in there.
We'll have that proposal before the board at the next meeting from Janet Fleming.
And that will be part of it or that'll be excluded?
That project?
Yeah.
All projects are on the table for the evaluation.
So again, my point with all that is that we will cover that four-point, that number's going to change and, you know, again, my view is that we should wait until we have that information instead of arbitrarily raising the rate at 10%. We should never, not done. We should never increase taxes or sewer rent, which is not deductible tax. We should never increase that more than 2% or 3% per year because many people do not have increases in their salaries to cover that. In essence, you're putting them at a net, a net loss or a net negative for their budget and it's not fair to people to give 2, 10% increases in two years.
Well, that would have been, made a lot of sense if we had increased it in the prior years, which we didn't, we're playing catch-up.
That's also only true if your salary is exactly equal to the sewer rent.
No, it's not true. Every, every, it's proportional, if your salary proportionally goes up 2%, you don't want to have to spend more of your salary relative to prior year on sewer rent. It's, it's not fair to people to, to give them 10% increases when most people don't have 10% increases in their salary from year to year.
But if I make a million dollars a year and my salary goes up by 2%, I have more than enough money, like that's just not how the math works.
Well, you might have a salary of a million dollars a year, but most people don't.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Rich, I think you've made your point and...
Move on.
We will be, I think we'll move on. We don't have a vote right now, so let's go ahead and...
Let it be known that Mr. Larkin has a million dollar a year salary.
Okay, that is, okay, unnecessary.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I may, just to add something, I understand the concern, but we have 10 to 15 million dollars worth of projects that are unfunded right now that need to be done on our sanitary system. We also are not maintaining the system the way we should be. So those are issues that we can go back 20 years, that we have not, our rate is so low that we have not been able to maintain this. And now, that's just on projects we know and how critical the repairs are, let alone which ones are going to let loose at any time. So we have 10 to 15 million dollars in projects that need, need to go now and we just, we don't, even with the 10% is not going to take care of those.
Well, actually, but it's, actually, Bob, it's the water consumption, right? Our rate, our mileage rate is actually fine. The water, the water usage has gone down. That's what's driving this deficit, correct?
No, because I believe we have been underfunded in the repairs and maintenance of the system. So if we, there was more funds available, we would be out further doing these repairs and not on the emergency repairs when these go. So we've got plenty there and 10% is going, is still woefully underfunding where we're at. And knowing that, I think when this study is done, we're going to see a whole lot more into our system.
Well, again, my, my view is that it's the water and the rate, the billing, that's, it's not the rate, it's the number of gallons on which the rate is based.
All right, Rich, we get your point. Okay. Mr. White, thank you very much for that.
Sean had something.
I'm fine.
Did you have something, Sean?
I mean, this is the price that we pay for keeping the sewer system in-house.
Exactly.
And this is what we all decided. It was a 7-0 vote.
Well, no, it wasn't 7-0 vote and, and this is not the price we pay. This is, this is, this is the price that this board and the majority has decided that they want taxpayers to pay.
Thank you.
And this, other people's money.
Thank you, Rich. Let's move on to the capital budget.
Bumper stickers. Wait, don't you have a vote on that?
No, we don't have a vote right yet. Do you need a copy of the agenda? Do you have a copy?
I have the mileage rates up. I don't have the agenda up.
Oh, okay.
But I thought we would vote on that before going on.
No, 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 not yet. That's item, that would be item E. So capital budget review. Mr. White.
All right, so this is one item that we really haven't gotten into a whole lot of detail on in our prior meetings. So we wanted to add an agenda item tonight just to step through it to make sure that everybody was clear on what is and what is not currently included in the budget and then we can get into as much discussion on these different items as the board would like. I'll start with what is included in the budget and if you had a chance to read through it, we discussed, we discussed our capital projects in two broad categories. We have a pay-as-you-go and a pay-as-you-use. And those were terms that were developed with CarFAC a number of years ago when we're working on different funding models for the overall program and they seem to work and people seem to understand what that means. So the pay-as-you-go, those are going to be the items that we would never issue long-term debt for. There are fleet vehicles and the capital items that we're using up within a short period of time, anywhere from one to, to five or seven years. And then the pay-as-you-use category is our, our longer-term assets that have a useful life that we would borrow for. And that includes almost all of our infrastructure, roads, sewers, sidewalks, facility improvements, parking lots, signals, all of those types of things. So what is included in the budget right now, the portion of the capital plan that is part of the overall numbers that we'll get into on the next agenda item, is the pay-as-you-go, which includes all of the departmental capital. And that was included in the, in the budget. It goes department by department and identifies the various pieces of equipment. Any kind of proceeds that we're getting, in this example, we do receive PEG proceeds from Verizon and Comcast that offset some of the cost of the replacement equipment in this room. And then we go department by department and we talk, and there's a line item for each of the capital items being replaced. In some cases, when we get into some of the larger pieces of equipment, we utilize capital leases for those. So garbage trucks are a great example. We started a number of years ago with capital lease programs or capital lease agreements to allow us to replace the garbage trucks at roughly 50,000 a year for five years versus needing 250,000 when we buy it. And then at the end of the lease, at the end of the five years, the asset becomes the townships and we use it as long as we can until it's... as long as we can until it's, it's useful life is over. So, all of that is detailed in the capital plan now. The amount is 1.5 million and that's all paid out of the general fund through, well, it's all paid out of the general fund. Then, the second category of capital projects are the, the pay-as-you, pay-as-you-use. And these include, like I said, all of our longer-term assets, our longer-life assets. When we were putting the budget together, well, let me start by saying, none of these projects are included in what is being funded for 2019 right now. And I know there was some confusion when the budget first came out. I think one of the boards and commissions were, took a look at it and thought that since it was listed in here, there was funding included for those projects and that, that's not the case. What we're identifying were all the projects that we know of, but at this time, because we don't have a funding plan for capital, for this piece of capital, they were not included. So, we took this category and we, we came up with two different, we put these in two different buckets. We have a recommended, and the recommended is predicated entirely on the fact that either agreements, we have board approval to move forward with the project and agreements have been entered into, or there are grant projects that we've received funding for. And there's, there's not many, but the amount is over a million. But that includes the projects listed here. Then, we have a not included, it's probably not the best category title, but these are items, these are projects or items that we're aware of today that, that need some, that need replacing, but we don't have funding for, or we haven't identified funding for. And we go through our facilities, infrastructure, which includes bridge repairs, some sidewalk projects that have been discussed in these meetings, as well as our parking lot replacements, traffic signals, and our park improvements, as well as some of the projects that were discussed at the first public hearing, like the WBA overlay, the streetscape plan. So, this is included in the budget that was published back at the beginning of October, but there had been a number of projects added to it. And jumping back to our first, first public hearing on the budget, that's kind of always been the problem with this grouping of projects is that it's, it's very fluid. There's never, there's never a point in time where I think any of us are absolutely confident that every project we know about has made its way to this list. So, it's very difficult to, to come up with a funding plan because the amount's always moving around. So, what we had talked about back at the first public hearing was, instead of trying to address this with this budget, given where the numbers were at for the regular operations of the general fund, is to not include these for now. And then, similar to the sanitary sewer, is have a dedicated meeting or two early in 2019 to, to hash out the projects in more detail and make sure that projects that aren't on this list get added in so they can be part of the conversation and then develop a funding plan from there. So, that's, that's kind of where we've left it. If there are questions on what the projects are or what, you know, what's included in here, Steve and I can, can answer those, but we'll, we'll let you take it from here on how you want to proceed.
Okay, does anyone, I, I have a quick question off the bat. So, the WBA was here and I know that in last prior budget, there was money set aside to do some streetscaping and things like that. That hasn't been done. Is that, I don't see that necessarily reflected in the pay-as-you-go portion. Is that here and I'm just missing it, or is that in the pay-as-you-use?
No, we have, we took that project out.
So, you took that project out? So, the dollars that were...
In consideration of the larger one.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so you...
So, any money that we didn't spend on the smaller project could theoretically be used for the bigger one, if the board wanted to identify that.
Okay.
But keeping, well, I mean, we have to be careful because a, a significant chunk of what we budgeted for that project is coming out of Shade Tree for the tree replacement. That can still be part of it. We just have to be careful and make sure we identify and only use Shade Tree money for the purchase of trees to be planted. So, I, and the reason why I bring that up is, the engineering piece alone for the WBA, if we were to move forward with the streetscape, is estimated at 390,000. I think the total project of what was included in 2018 was 150 in that ballpark. And I, more than half of that was for the trees. So, I just, we just have to be careful not to think that we have 150,000 sitting there that we can use for engineering costs for a larger project because we don't, because most of that would only be, we could only use for the trees.
And is this a project that could be, and certainly this is for a larger discussion, but is this a project that could be phased in or, you know, do something now, something later?
Absolutely. I mean, it, it's all going to start with the engineering cost and then, whatever direction we give the firm that we hired to do that study, they could, they could develop the program any way we gave them direction for. But I would anticipate, if we were going to move forward with that, that the 390 would be necessary to pay for the engineering study. It's the, the 3.1 million, that could be phased and would not necessarily all be necessary in one year.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Okay. So, Bill, can you go back up to the top on this? These recommended projects, 1.1 million, these, these are all approved projects. This board has already approved all of this to be done. So, I understand what you're saying, to develop a capital plan and, and hash out. I mean, you know, so obviously, we want to spend, there's somebody, either you or Lisa suggesting we spend a lot more meetings going hashing these out, but we already hashed out these ones on the recommended list. So, how can we leave these out of the budget? They're already approved, we have to put them in the budget. And if we leave them out of the budget, what do you mean we'll come up with a plan of finance? If they're not in the budget, they'll have to wait till the next budget, won't they?
Well, I'll answer the last question first because that's the easiest. And yes, if they're not included in next year's, they'll have to be postponed until there is money for the project.
Well, Bill, couldn't we, I mean, on a case-by-case basis, couldn't we borrow for them if we wanted to or make an expenditure out of the reserve fund if we needed to or wanted to?
Yeah, or any combination of both those options, yes.
So, they don't have to be deferred until 2020? We could make the decision in calendar year 2019 to fund an individual project or five of the projects? Or this doesn't mean that we're necessarily pushing them off a full year?
That is correct, yes.
That would be why we need the discussions to happen before next October.
I, I would just disagree with that. We had the discussions, that makes sense to the not included ones below. So, all those projects, we haven't hashed those out. The ones on the recommended were all decided and approved by this board. Approved. They should move forward. Now, if they're not, if we're not going to, the, the way we fund them is either put them in the budget and provide for them in the budget, either through millage increase or through spending down of reserves, or to plan on issuing bonds or other indebtedness that would evidence, evidence an amount that would be equal to what we're going to put on there. But these are all approved, they need to be in the budget. So, if we're not going to put them in, if we're not, if they're, they can't just be pushed off, they're approved. And why would we rehash what we've already hashed?
Well, let me, let me just go into a little bit more detail. So, for example, the Matson-Ford Bridge, that's a project that's been approved by the board. But it, when we had the discussion, we were anticipating having half of the cost of that project being funded by the, the school district. My understanding is, is that they're not in a position to make their half of the payment at this time, which makes the entire project difficult to move forward with because the township can't fund the entire thing, nor should we, given the agreement that we are in. So, that's an example of one that we should not move forward with that project until we have absolute certainty on where the other half of the funding is going to come from, come from.
Well, we do, we do have absolute certainty, Bill. It'll come from the school district. They have a hundred million dollar budget and they're obligated to pay. And in that event, we, we already approved the project. So, all of these projects have been approved. They need to go in the budget. I, I don't, I don't see how they could be kept out of the budget.
My point is, is that they were approved with certain conditions. And if those conditions don't pan out as anticipated, then the project doesn't necessarily have to go forward, or at least doesn't have to go forward right away. The North Wayne, the Poplar-Lancaster sidewalk, we have a grant approval. I, now, this one, I would argue that in the future as we go forward with these kind of projects that, at the moment, we agree to enter in or to apply for a grant, we should have our own portion set aside immediately so that we're not in a predicament where if we get approval, then we have to find or come up with our share. But that's one that if, if the board doesn't want to move forward with it, we can, we can turn the grant down. The road resurfacing, two years ago, the board adopted a, a resurfacing program of a million a year. We get, well, we're anticipating 800,000 and some change from the liquid fuels state funding program next year. So, we're just funding the gap to get us up to 1 million. The board could decide at any time not to fund the gap and then we only do an $800,000 program. So, that's, that's one that can be evaluated year by year. We had set the million dollars, just for those that weren't part of the discussions then, the million dollars was set on a recommendation that at a million dollars per year, we could get through all the township roads roughly every 12 years, which is a, a, you know, I, I, whatever the engineering term is for the, what we want to aim for, what a good useful life of our roads is. That wasn't an arbitrary amount, that was something that's an industry standard on their end. So, it's not something that's set in stone, it's something the board can evaluate year by year.
On this, the next one, the traffic signals, as, as a gesture on my part, that's for a project in my ward and I, in order to reduce this budget here, I would certainly volunteer to give that project up. So, we saved the township 231,000, which could be used to fund other needs of the township. So, I, I would propose to take that one out. But again, it was approved, but I, I would certainly volunteer to give that up at this point. Shows how big a heart I have.
But isn't that a traffic improvement project?
But it, I mean, that also goes to...
And that's a grant, that's a grant, that's a grant, that's a grant as well.
That, that goes to my point that not, just because these projects were approved doesn't mean that they have to go forward.
It, it, it would take four votes of the board, but I certainly, as the person in, in my ward, that's a project that's not supported by my constituents and we certainly would be willing to forego that at this point in, in light of the significant needs of the township.
You have such a big heart, Rich.
Thank you.
And then, the last item on this list is the, the trail extension over at Hartford, or the trail installation over at Hartford. We had partially funded, funded this, 125,000 with the 2015 bonds. The 199 here represents the, the remaining amount needed to complete the project as engineered.
And again, it's approved and that was only an estimate, it could be less. But a, as I see it, these projects are all approved, we have contracts, we've approved them on the board. It would be a waste of time for the, for the board to go back and rehash them. And we certainly don't have unlimited time with this board. They should be, in my view, included in this budget, one way or the other, either spent, either, either funded with a tax increase that the majority of this board might approve, which I wouldn't plan on approving, or to spend down the existing fund balance. But those should definitely be part of the budget, they've been discussed and they should not be rehashed. The ones down below, the 2.1 million, those we might want to rehash, Lisa, and schedule a bunch of different meetings to see which ones of those get approved. Presumably, there would be a borrowing that would be a, a bond, 20-year or whatever, it'd be longer than the note presumably. And that would be increased debt service, which again, would need to be funded by this board. So, that should be part of the budget. If not, then that would also have to wait until it goes into the budget for next year as well, wouldn't it? Or could, could a bond bill issued for these projects that are under the not included and say you put, used a bond of 11 million, 2.1, 6.1, 1 points, you know, there, thereabouts, say 11 million, what, what is that number?
Uh, 9.8, so 10.
9.8, that's, say 10 million dollars. So, say you borrowed 10 million in 2019. How would, if, if the debt service for that borrowing is not in the budget, that would just be a, a change to the budget?
Yes, yeah. So, beginning, depending on what part of the year in 2019, we, we complete the transaction, the debt payments probably wouldn't start either till the end of 2019 or into 20, even into 2020. But that's what we would do, we would increase the debt service expense in the general fund.
But we can increase the millage.
Not for 2019, but for 2020, yes.
Right.
So, if the board wanted to, we could structure the, we could structure the debt so that the payments didn't begin in 2020, no matter what. I, you know, I, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves or, or get into more detail tonight than we intend to, but with some of these projects, we, similar to what we did with the sewer fund, we might want to talk about more of a, a bank loan or something with some flexibility to allow us to draw down. Because I'm not entirely sure that we could quickly spend the money on some of these. If there's a lot of lead time and engineering work that are, that is necessary, again, why would we want to borrow the money, pay interest on it and then not use it until year two or three? But...
Well, because, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just looking at what the administration has presented and my understanding is that this is what you would want us to do if money was not an issue. So, that's why, I'm, I'm just following your lead. That's why, I mean, if we, if we don't need it now, then, but the reason I'm talking about is because it's on the list.
Sure.
Maybe if I can just add briefly is, these projects aren't like wish lists or like, boy, this would be nice. These are things that we have to address. And as part of this list, we don't address a lot of the tree issues, other infrastructure issues as well. So, this list will grow. But that's why I think these meetings we want to meet with is to start to knock this list down and then the board can set priorities. As Bill's talked about smoothing this out so you don't have these major impacts dollar-wise. But there's nothing on here that we would say, boy, this would just be great. These are all things that have to be done and have to be addressed.
Understood. That's what my understa, that's why I, because it's, these are, what my understanding is that these are needed.
Correct.
So, my problem with this is that instead of doing a budget today and saying, this is what we need and this is the impact to the constituents, what we're doing is saying, well, let's raise it 10% or 9.67, whatever the recommendation is for this year. And then, over the next few months, we'll come up with what the needs are on these projects and then we'll raise taxes again on the constituents, either in 2019 or in 2020, on top of what we put into the base. Again, we're looking at a, a massive increase to the constituents and I think that we would be better served to address the needed items, the recommended items at this point and to further evaluate the others and plan on putting those in a debt service increase in 2020 and providing for that at that time.
All right. Can I put my, can I?
I, you, you could have, first, remember? I, I offered you to go first.
I was waiting for your, your sermon. Thank you, Rich, for all that good stuff. My, and my concern with that is... My, and my concern with that is I don't really want to sacrifice having liquidity or what little liquidity that we have today to have a liquidity crunch tomorrow when we have 10 million, 11 million in new debt servicing. So I don't think that you can lump all this stuff in. The other issue I have is this, it's, I guess the mutually exclusive comes to my mind in the sense of you have sewer and you have all these expenses. So I, I think that we need to look at maybe raising taxes, raising fees. This is not anything that anyone wants to do. And talk about what we spoke about at the prior meeting, which would be kind of what's our plan B if business privilege tax, as well as mercantile tax, stays low next year. And that's kind of where, where I'm at.
Well, Sean, I think you would agree with me that we can predict interest rates going up over the next year, probably not going down. So in general, borrowing sooner rather than later is probably a benefit to the township, especially when we're talking about 15 million for the sewer and 10 million or more for, for these other projects. So my proposal would be, so $25 million, we, we certainly would rather have that at 3% than 4%, which we could easily see in the next year.
Let's ask Bill White what, no, let's ask Bill White what 10 million in new funding would do to our credit rating.
Well, and so it's 10 million and 15, I guess, if, I think it would still affect the credit rating, but-
Plus the sewer, plus everything else.
The, what I would propose, Sean, would be to, at least that 1.1 million from the recommended, let's put that into the budget now and spend down the reserve funds to, to cover those projects, because they're already approved.
So you want to, hold on. So you want to spend down the reserve and issue 10 million in new financing?
Well, we have to, we have to go through the 10 million. I don't know that I will agree to that, but certainly that's what the plan on the table is, is to look at that 10 million later. Lisa's got a schedule of meetings, and she, it was said to hash it out. So I'm, I'm willing to, to work with the board on that. But, but what I'm saying is we have recommended projects, they're recommended by the administration, by the township manager, and they have been hashed out and approved by this board.
Okay, so getting back to your point about interest rates rising, they are rising short-term, but if you're looking at issuing 15, 20-year debt, I don't think one can forecast what interest rates are going to do and how you can react to a year.
You could, you could, you're right. You could have an inverted curve, but I think that in general, the, the guess is, is that the long end of the curve will also increase.
I'm, we'll leave it, Bill, we'll let you weigh in here.
Well, a, a couple of quick things. First of all, with regard to the larger capital project funding discussion, keep in mind that this is just, this is just one of three groups that, that we still need, that we need to figure out how we're going to fund. We just talked about sanitary sewer. We also have stormwater, and then we have this list. So we have, we have three different categories of infrastructure-type projects that have unique funding sources. So if we're going to talk about borrowing, and this lends itself to a larger discussion next year, is we, we should talk about all three. We should talk about this list, sanitary sewer, and stormwater at the same time, because if there's an op, if, if there is interest in borrowing, and there are sanitary and stormwater projects, we might as well do those as part of the same transaction and take advantage of the interest rates for those projects as well. In terms of discussion on 2019 specifically, and whether to, or how to include the 1.1 million in approved projects, that's, that's a discussion that we, we can't really have that in a vacuum just looking at this, because as we talked about in the other hearings, we've got the OPEB funding plan. We have requests from the fire company and the senior center for additional funds, as well as recommendations from the Shade Tree Committee on a pretty expansive program there too. So it's difficult to just look at the 1.1 by itself and decide what any kind of tax increase would be dedicated toward.
Well, my proposal was not a tax increase. My proposal was to cover that 1.1 out of the fund balance and have no tax increase associated with this. That's my proposal is, that's what I'm recommending. That's what my, that's what I would like to see this board do.
And my observation with that is, is why I wasn't suggesting you were recommending or agreeing to any tax increase, was that doing that by, or making that recommendation on this by itself leaves out other things that we know are, have to be decided upon with this budget.
Right.
It's just difficult to look at this in a vacuum.
I'd leave them out.
Bill, does this, I mean, is this really, yeah, short-sighted? Because we're going to have a ton of other expenses unknowns that creep up in 2021, 22, and 23. This is just a, I don't want to say a, a short-term focus. This is, these are all long-term goals that need to be addressed, but do we have an idea of what's going to creep up in three, four years from now as well? You know, roofs and, and longer-term capital plans?
Well, in, in some cases, I, I would say yes. And we've been including the facility improvements and, and some of these other items that are in the not included category. We've been including those in our long-term capital plan for years. What we've always come up short on is how we're going to fund everything. We, for the last four or five years, we've been fortunate enough that the business taxes have grown annually by an amount sufficient enough to cover it. So we've, we've always been able to get by, but now we're in a situation where that's not the case. So we're right back at the same problem that we were having all those years. We just were fortunate enough to have revenue to cover it. But there's, the other issue, and I think I mentioned this either last week or at the first public hearing, the, the hesitation I have with that question specifically, Commissioner, is that I never feel like this list is complete, because I could, you know, based on tonight's storm, we could walk in tomorrow and hear about three new projects that came up as a result of whatever happened tonight. Or there's always projects like these that are, that are popping up. And that's, that's not unusual. We just haven't really figured out a good way to, to deal with that from a planning standpoint. It's always been, again, we've been fortunate enough to have revenue, that we were able to put those projects in last second, but now it's a little different.
So I think, you know, Bill makes a good point about not having this conversation in a vacuum, because what we see here doesn't even account for what we've already got going on in the budget, the things that we need to consider, the OPEB funding and things like that. So Bill, will that, if we start, if we talk about the millage rate review, we'll be looking at all this, and then, you know?
Well, this is not in a vacuum. Again, this would not affect setting the millage rate, because my, my proposal, my suggestion, and my, what I urge this board to do is to not rehash and not to redo the work that has been done, but to fund the projects that we committed to, to funding at the, at the 1.1. One exception is I will, again, volunteer to, to reduce that to 900,000 for that one project and take that out. But this board rehashed it, approved it, and it's not in a vacuum. It would be part of this budget as it should be, because this board has already indicated its wish to do so.
I understand that you want to take the funds out of the reserve fund, and that is just mathematically doable this year, but next year, we have to pay the money back. And you've said that you-
We, that's our policy. We can't, we can choose to pay it back or not to.
So we would have to have a new ordinance that we would pass.
That's correct.
If the majority of us agree that we're going to not repay the reserve fund, we just won't have one.
There would be a slightly lower reserve fund, yes. That's what I would propose, and it would be up to this board to approve that or not, yes.
Well, if there's no tax increase, then we'll be in the same position that we're in next year.
Maybe, if revenues don't increase, but if revenues increase, or if, as Bill alluded to, we have known unknowns and unknown unknowns. So we may or may not have a, a larger or smaller reserve fund next year. We'll have to wait and see. But certainly, I agree, my proposal right now would be to spend down approximately 900,000 from where we showed it last. So it's not in a vacuum. Those projects, less the 231, 140, I'd propose that we put into the budget right now, and I think we need to, because we've approved those projects.
All right. Any other conversation on the capital budget piece? All right, well, then I guess we'll go to the 2019 millage rate review, which is where?
So this kind of brings it all together with regard to the general fund. Where we left our discussion a week ago was that we had roughly a, just shy of $500,000 deficit in what was being, what the township managers recommended budget included. We had gone through several different iterations and scenarios with funding and what to include and what not to include. The board had asked administratively if we could go back and find any reductions that are, that are out there that we could incorporate. We have, there's been some administrative reductions that, that we built into what you're looking at now. So as it stands now at a, at a base level, before we consider any of the capital and any of the additional requests by the other entities and the OPEB funding plan, we're, we'll just call it break even. There's a $23,000 net revenue here, but at, at a $34 million budget, that's, that's as thin as it gets in terms of breaking even. So this, this could serve as the new baseline, and in response to what the board had asked for, that's, that's where, what we were able to come up with. And again, it was all administrative reviews on the expense side. We didn't adjust any of the revenue assumptions, again, because what we talked about last week is the uncertainty with the, the biggest piece of our revenue being the business taxes. So where that leaves us now is, on the expense side, there was a, a proposal from a commissioner to include the OPEB, include fire at 100,000, and include the senior center request for I have those still included in the, the version that we're looking at now.
Those were voted on by this board, right, Bill?
There was no vote taken. I think we were just working with different scenarios. And this was the last one we talked about before we concluded the meeting, so that's, that's where we're starting at tonight. It can obviously go-
We voted on OPEB, though.
I think it was, was it an actual vote? Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah.
It was reported in the paper.
There it is. So it, well, it's in here. That's what the 1,259 is. So that's included in here. So where we're at right now is, with the administrative reductions, there is an assumed tax adjustment here that is obviously what this agenda item is meant to, to cover. I think we had left it off a, a week ago at, at least I had in my spreadsheet still 6%. I know we had talked about other percentage amounts, some higher, some lower, but that's what's in here now. We can, we can change that as we go, but that's the number of what, that's included on the revenue side now. So where that leaves us is with about a $600,000 deficit next year, that would need to come out of the, the reserves of the general fund. We estimate those to, to end up being $8 million. We spent some time talking about the fund balance policy. At 25%, the fund balance policy would be 8.8 or close to 8.9 million. So if everything panned out exactly as budgeted, we'd end up about 800,000 short on our fund balance policy. So again, that, if, if we were to move forward with adding the 1.1 in capital against reserves, then that eight point, or that 815,000 would grow to be just shy of 2 million short of the fund balance.
We'll use the 900,000 number because of-
Well, I'm just going on based on what the board has already approved, and they did approve that project.
Can you explain, that's true. Can you explain how you got to 700,000 up above from the 1.2 we talked about at last meeting? Total revenue mod, revenue mods right there?
So a 6% adjustment in our millage would generate 760,000 or 759 and some change. So that's what, that's what that is. And we were-
All right, so we, we are talking about a 1.2 million last meeting, which was about a 9% increase, and that's why, so what you did with this is 6%, and you increased the, the deficit in the general fund. That, that deficit you showed, that would require us to either provide a funding plan to repay that or to change the ordinance, right? So we're not, we're in this situation anyway, correct?
Well, with regard to your question of either figure out a way to fill the gap or change the ordinance, yes. And, and the board has a year to figure that out. It's not something we'd have to have determined by the end of 2019. But, well, in, with regard to funding 2020, we would need to have it figured out or amend the policy.
So again, Commissioner Larkin talked about, well, we, we will have to pay it back, we're, we're going to, we don't want to deplete the general fund, but the budget you're proposing right now, this before us, we, we're depleting it, we have that issue anyway.
Yeah, I do actually have that concern at 6%. What I will say is that the smaller the dollar figure that we invade into the reserve fund, the easier it is to repay, if we have to invade the reserve fund at all. So this isn't a binary thing for me. I don't love 815. Now, you guys had mentioned cost reductions. Does the 815 include the cost reductions?
Yes, yes, it does.
Oh, it does? Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Booker. I have a problem with invading the reserve fund. I'd rather invade it less than more, because we have to pay back every dollar that we take out. I'm not in favor of abolishing a reserve fund. That sounds like living without a savings account to me. And there is frankly a limit to which we can increase taxes in any single year and keep faith with residents. So I may end up having to live with this.
But again, the reduction in the general fund is at the discretion of this board. There is no minimum requirement, and it's just a matter of what this board is comfortable with. We don't need to pay back each and every dollar. It's at the discretion of the board, what we pay back, what we have in the general fund. My view is having $8 million in the general fund is probably too much of the taxpayers' dollars. If we have $8 million that we have just sitting there waiting to be used, my view is that that is too big a government and not enough of, not low enough taxes. We shouldn't keep that much of the people's money. Give it back to the people, and we should have a lower, lower number. The reason that got so high was because we had a big infusion of cash from an audit, and we built it up. I, I think it's not commensurate with the needs of today, and we shouldn't keep that money as a government. We should give that back to the people.
That's a mischaracterization of the purpose of this.
It's a perfect characterization of the situation.
You did not live through 2009, 10, those years.
I did, I was alive, yes. I'm, I'm a survivor.
Yeah, but you weren't on this board, Rich. Stop interrupting me.
I'm a survivor of the, of the recession.
Rich, it is, please, it is Commissioner Nagel's opportunity. So anyway, when Bill first came here and Bob first came here, we were, the first budget I voted for, we deficit spent by a million four, Bob, do you remember? And the one after that, and we increased taxes 7% and still had that kind of deficit. The purpose of this is to take care of situations when especially the, the business side of the house falls, and that's why it's incremented. At a certain percentage of our taxes that come from business taxes, 511 and whatnot, we only need 15%. When we get to the next marker, then it increases to 25%. It's all very sound, and it's based on those issues in history. And they haven't repealed the business cycle. So we'll be there again, and you're all going to be really happy that we aren't going to have to do a 7, 8, 9, 10% tax increase just because of those taxes rolling back. We will have this fund to use.
Well, we are talking about a 6, 7, 8, 9, 10% tax increase anyway. And again, it's easy for politicians on this board to use other people's money to put into the bank. It's other people's money. It's not our money. It's the people's money. We should not keep more than what we need. And if you're concerned about this, you know, raise the taxes. You all can vote for that.
Well, Richie, you haven't voted for it.
I'm not going to do that. And I, I would spend it down. We, we should give back what we don't need. It's, it's too high a number.
Well, I disagree completely, and I love how you speak in bumper stickers. Other people's money, it's my money. I pay taxes, you pay taxes. It's all our money.
You, you think it's the government's money. It's not the government's money. It's not the government's money.
I did not say that, Rich. I said it's our money to serve the people.
It's other people's money.
This is not, it's unproductive. So, Rich, I'm guessing you continue to advocate to put that 1.1 million in?
Well, 900, because I would forego that $231,000.
Well, I gotta be honest with you, though, that actually concerns me pulling that out because that is a grant, that's a grant-funded project, correct? I mean, if we pull our support out of that particular project, does that project not go forward, and what does that do to the grant that...
But we could put it in the other bucket, though. You could put it in the other bucket.
Okay, can I ask a question and get an answer, please? Not from you, thank you.
Well, I'm just trying to be helpful.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. Bill?
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'll defer that to Steve.
So Commissioner, that's a grant that we applied for with Cabrini and Eastern. So if the project fell through, we'd have to turn down the grant. We'd also have to let Cabrini and Eastern know that. The strength of the grant was that it was three separate entities that were applying for this, a traffic project.
But again, we could put it in and just put it to the other bucket and hash it out and add it back then. It doesn't need, just taking it out right now doesn't mean it's gone.
I don't know the timeline on the grant. We'd have to check that because if there is a timeline for spending and reimbursement, that could be affected by however long we defer.
Yeah, and I'm inclined to, I'm inclined to support projects that are going to help with the traffic issue, so.
Well, then it would be 1.1 if you insist on putting that in there.
Okay.
I wouldn't.
So, are you finished? Was it my turn? Thank you.
Depends on what you say next.
Well, what I'm going to say next is, I, you know, I'm in favor of not spending, spending as little as we can out of our reserves. I think that we need to keep that money. I think that, you know, Commissioner Nagel makes, you know, an excellent case for what had happened in prior years, and I think that we owe it to the township and the community to make sure that we're being, you know, that we have money to take care of things that could happen, that we can anticipate. I hear a lot of, you know, we can't anticipate, we don't know. What we need to do is, moving forward, we need to find some more reliable sources of revenue. I think things that we can hope, you know, measure and count on. I don't know where those exist, but, you know, I'd like to have those discussions and engage the community in those as well. Rich, do you mind?
My mic's not off.
Okay. You know, I would like to see, you know, one of the things we are not funding in here is I'd like to see if we could put maybe 15,000 in for the library. I know I shouldn't be spending more, but I am concerned, you know, the idea of them cutting hours and things like that, so I'd, that would be something I'd like to see. And then, you know, because I think those are things that are important, I think those are things that are important to the community, and I think that those are things that people are willing to contribute to.
Commissioner Brask, are you going to make one observation on what you just said there? We are going to pay for these projects that are on that list in some way, shape, or form. Some or all of those projects will, by not including them in the budget, it doesn't mean that they're not going to, it's not going to be money spent. It will be spent at a later date, either with a later tax increase, issuing a bond, or spending down the reserve. It's a fallacy to think that if we don't put it in today, that that money won't be spent. It will be spent.
Can I ask Bill a question? Lisa, are you going to respond to that? Okay, no, go ahead, respond if you need to. I just have a question. Can you go back up? So that's assuming that we're funding OPEB the full amount? Is that correct? Am I correct in that?
Yeah, the full amount that was slated as part of the plan.
That 1.02, no, pardon me, that 1.3 million, is that correct?
That is correct.
So let's say you slice that number in half. So that saves another 600,000?
Rich, Rich, Rich.
Wait, do number two, yeah, do number two.
Rich, let me, let me.
It was MMO we changed.
Rich, please.
Wait, listen, the MMO, he can't change. We can't change that.
Okay.
Thank you, okay. And then, I know you don't want to hear it, then if we increase the property tax from 6% to 7.5%, where are we? What's our shortfall?
We would end up with a positive 227,000, and then the fund balance policy looks like it would be okay as well.
So then we don't, so then we don't need to draw down the reserves?
Under, well, yeah, under this scenario, we would not draw down on the reserves. It still leaves the capital issue unresolved, but...
And then we could support the fire and all that other good stuff?
Well, we'd support the fire right now with an additional 100,000 in seniors by 15. And one point of clarification, what's included in these base numbers are the increases to the various community organization groups that were presented initially. So the library does include the amount that they requested.
So the library is, the 30,000 is in here for the library?
The increased funding that they had requested at the first public hearing is still part of what, is still part of these numbers. We didn't pull those out. I know there was some discussion about it.
Yeah, okay.
But without specific direction, we just kept them in for now.
And Bill, the reason why I'm asking you to run these numbers is, again, no one has a crystal ball. We don't know what is going to happen with, you know, if it's a one-time anomaly with our business privilege and mercantile tax, we're not. So if you see it two years in a row, then it's a trend. So I'm under the impression I am most comfortable with this because, again, if we run into the same revenues for our BP tax, then it's not an anomaly, it's a new normal, and we have to account for it. And again, drawing downs, it's a bad precedent in my mind.
Just one observation on that, Commissioner Farre. Again, Bill, Bob, you have $3 million in projects for 2019, either recommended and not included, and Bob indicated these are all important projects. So that $3 million will show up, it will need to be paid for in 2019. So it's, you're talking about another tax increase later this year, not just the 7.5% Commissioner Farre proposed.
I believe that's why in the proposal that we made with the 0% tax increase is the commitment, because as we've discussed so far, all the various projects that need to be focused on all of these to make the decision, I think, I understand the board not wanting to draw down the reserves. I understand that, appreciate that. But this would be the time where you have reserves, you can do that. Why you commit to all these meetings to determine, long-term, how does this all factor in together? Because you're in a box here to try to make a decision on items, which I think it has to be looked at the bigger picture, all the different variables. And I think the meeting's committing to that. You'll then have a better place so you're not, okay, we're going to raise them now, but yet we still have projects that probably don't appear here now that may change the whole variable. That's why I think if you take the process for the year, board determines, here's what we want to do, this is the process. You engage Bill and his staff and all the staff to say, how do, can we smooth this out? How do we work this? How do we set this plan up long-term? Because it's not short-term fix, this is a long-term fix that when the board decides this, this is something that hopefully will carry on for the next 10, 20 years, that this is a plan to follow. And again, things will come up at time to time, but you'll address those. But the long-term, this is what's sitting forward. So I would, I appreciate the board wanting to do that, but I would still recommend the 0% tax increase and the commitment to have all these means and to determine best how to move forward.
Yeah, but the 0% tax increase didn't include the contribution to the OPEB, correct?
That is correct, but we would suspend.
Nor does it include the capital.
That's correct, but that would be the suspension of the...
The 1.1 recommended capital.
Correct, and that would be the suspension of the one year of that fund to determine all of this long-term. Because it's, these are not short-term fixes, and we're looking to address these now, and long-term, all this hitches itself to each other. They're all intermingled and tied, how you make a decision with this. That's my recommendation to you.
Well, I appreciate that. I am, but when you talk about long-term and the long-term, I mean, we have a long-term plan with regards to OPEB, and I think it's a mistake for us to get off of that. I think it's a mistake for us not to continue that.
I agree, and I'm also left with the issue of if we don't fund OPEB for this year, and we don't do the capital projects for this year, and we don't raise taxes for this year, we can get to zero or closer to it anyway, but we're still left with the exact same problems for next year, which means we're going to need either a new revenue source or to increase the existing revenue sources, or to just commit that we're just not going to do any capital projects ever again, or to say we're not going to fund OPEB, which is, of course, going to become an enormous problem longer term when the fund comes due. So I want to do at least something this year. I'm not offended by a small invasion of the reserve, as long as we keep it small enough that we can repay it next year. But I completely agree, Bob, that we've got to spend next year finding ways to fund this because a small tax increase at 6%, which is 50 bucks per person on the average householder per year, coupled with a reduction in the capital spending, and Commissioner Booker is right, we are going to revisit those projects, and at least some of them are going to end up getting done, which means we either borrow to cover them, increase our debt service, or we invade the fund more than we're even talking about right now. The small tax increase is not going to cover that long-term. We need to find new ways to fix that problem.
Any other comments?
Yeah, real quick, and I apologize for my voice, I'm just getting it back from a cold over the weekend, but I am going to support the manager's recommended budget of a 0% tax increase. Heard from a lot of residents today, 75% support a 0% tax increase, the quarter percent, or the 25% that can, that would approve of a tax increase, asked that it be held off till 2019 and take that first quarter. So we have a strategic plan because what they see up here is, on the fly, seven commissioners talking about raising taxes, and it doesn't sit well with residents and their wallets. So I would support 0% tax increase, use the first quarter of next year to actually sit down the board and staff and talk about what projects are our priorities and how we're going to pay for them. You know, if we're looking at this proposal, and Commissioner Larkin, I don't know if this would sit well with you, but if OPEB is a priority, you know, I would do something similar to what Commissioner Farre had recommended and fund it at 200,000. That leaves a million out, but, you know, over 25 years, we could look at putting that million back if that's a priority, and using that million to cover some of these projects so we're not with, so we're not taking out of the general fund.
So some of this just comes from personal finance, which can be dangerous to generalize to government finance, but I am incredibly leery about making decisions based on what we perceive today as a crisis. So today, there's a crisis, and we fund OPEB at a little bit less than we would normally, and we don't need that money for right now. We need it for later, and we'll put in more later. It's like saying I don't need my 401K right now, I'll put a little bit less in this year, and next year I'll fund it with more money. I frankly think that next year we're going to have fewer dollars in business revenue than we do this year. We've had a really long period of economic expansion, which is fantastic, but it's longer than the historical average. Hopefully, if there is a downturn, hopefully there will not be a downturn, and hopefully if there is, it will not affect Radnor. But these numbers, I think, include, Bill, correct me, is it a $1 million increase in business tax revenues for 2019 we're projecting?
Just shy of two.
Okay. So I think that that is wildly optimistic, and I really hope that I'm wrong in next year. I'm able to say that we brought in tons of extra money, and it was a $4 million increase, but if we reduce OPEB this year, we're not going to be able to pay it next year if my expectation is correct. So then we cut it more, and then the next year, we're going to be just coming out of a depression, I hope, or, I should not have said depression, recession, I hope. And we're not going to want to fund it then, so this really becomes a three-year project that we're cutting OPEB for, and then we need to find three years where, I mean, you see where I'm going with this.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm okay with, I don't think it's a crisis if you don't fund it this year. I mean, you add a year on to the end of it. Previous boards could have funded this program at 500,000 and just lengthened the period out that they wanted to repay it. So, you know, maybe the million dollars a year was a little bit too optimistic.
I agree, and that's why I'm saying that I'm looking at this from the perspective from personal finance. I don't know that the reserve number that we have right now is the perfect reserve number, but I'm really leery of pushing that reserve number down just because we want to spend the reserve. I don't know that the OPEB number that we have this year is the perfect OPEB number. I'm leery of pushing that number down just because we want the money.
So if we don't pay, so if we don't pay into OPEB this year, we would not be taking out of the reserves?
Correct. I'm saying those are two related but separate things. I'm concerned about reducing the number of dollars that we have in the reserve. Like, we could say, instead of deciding we want $8 million in the reserve, we could just say from now on, it's going to be $5 million in the reserve. Now is not a great time to do that because the reason we're doing that is not because we've gotten together and done regressions, and now we understand we really only need the five. We're saying we want the extra $3 million to spend stuff. The same is true for OPEB. If we're just saying we're going to reduce the number because we think that's not the necessary dollars for OPEB, we, none of us have done that study right now. We don't know if we really need to spend less on OPEB. We're just saying we want the money to spend it on other stuff, like Matsonford Bridge. I'd like to fix the bridge, I just don't want to make that decision based on my other needs.
Yeah, I wasn't even going into those projects. I was, my suggestion was to hold off on OPEB for 2019 in hopes of actually getting together in the first quarter of 2009, of next year, and really hammering out a strategic plan. And then if, you know, the numbers don't work and we need to increase millage, you know, we've actually sat down for longer than two weeks and thought about it.
I guess my question then is, if we're going to anticipate that we're going to find a way to either increase revenue or decrease expenses in the first quarter of 2019, we don't need to cut OPEB. If we're anticipating that we won't be able to do both of those things, then I think it's even more critical that we hold ourselves to the standard of we're not going to cut OPEB, we're going to find other ways to do it. Because that's an obligation that we have, and it'll be a true crisis if we get to the day that that comes due and it's not available. In the same way, I keep going back to the 401K example, but I can take money out of my 401K contributions, and I can hopefully make that up next year, but if I just keep deferring that eventually, I'm going to retire and I won't have the money.
And Commissioner Larkin, I appreciate the dialogue. I mean, it's a good conversation. And Bill, are we creating a crisis if we push off OPEB for one year down the road? And I understand Commissioner Larkin's point that, you know, we do it once this year, do we do it next year? You know, I wouldn't, at this point, I wouldn't support multiple years doing this. This is a one-time thing for me to get the number straight with the board.
Yeah, I, I, well, I work very closely with Carfac in coming up with the OPEB funding plan, so it's something that I definitely believe in. I would, I mean, the word crisis sends a pretty alarming feeling out. It's, I would not categorize it as a crisis. Yeah, it, so we don't, we don't really, we haven't really talked about it much this year because alls we've been talking about is how to fill a deficit, but in the broad picture, Radnor is financially pretty healthy. And we're healthy because we have strong reserves, and we have fiscal policies that make it so that we have money where it, it's going where it needs to go to make sure that we're setting aside for future obligations. I think one year will not put us immediately in a bad spot, but at the same time, I do respect the notion that, you know, while it's difficult in year one, it becomes easier every year to push that back. And that's kind of how the township got in a position it was with OPEB in the first place. So if we do elect to suspend that for a year, as we talked about when the budget was first proposed, then it needs to be, where we would strongly recommend that it be at the top of the funding list to be put back in next year.
So this is kind of like a, to me, a circular argument in the sense of either, and it's not, first of all, it's not binary. We don't need to, it's not a we fund it all or we fund none of it. We can fund any amount in between. That's number one. Number two is, if we draw it down, we draw down the reserves with the promise to pay it back next year, and we don't do it, that sets a bad precedent. Just as it sets a bad precedent if we say that we're only going to fund OPEB half and we'll make it up next year. It's the same amount of money, it's just how you choose to spend it or not spend it. So I think... think that this board needs to look at what is a bigger priority, although it's robbing, you know, Peter to pay Paul. It's one pocket or another. It's a shortfall that's going to be either, say, in OPEB, or paying back a reserve, or something else. And that's why I am, no one wants to hear it, but again, I would rather see a tax increase to a certain extent. If it's $50, you say, year, Jack, or 55 or 60, to me, I don't want to see us trying to decide and trying to forecast where our business privilege taxes are going to be. And I know it only makes up a small amount, but that's really, really a big concern when it talks to stewardship and financial soundness. And when you look at the sewer system, which is a perfect example, that's an asset that we did not steward, and now we have, years later, a big problem. So when you look at OPEB, we are still stewarding it, but it's just not at the level that we want.
So to respond to what you said, I think there is an aspect to tapping the OPEB fund, which is binary, which is, once you do it once, it has become a target for appropriations.
Not to interrupt, but the same thing, if you take a drawdown on the general fund, once you do it once, it's like, hey, hey, as soon as you take that early withdrawal in your 401K, and you pay your 10% penalty, yeah, it hurt the first time, but the second time, I mean, it's not shock. You get used to it. And I mean, I was a, to use that example, where it is your savings account, I was a financial advisor, and that was the last thing people touched. But as soon as they touched it once, they were fine with it. As soon as people have a balance, you know, the first balance they have on a credit card, well, they're comfortable paying that interest fee. And I just don't want to see us, you know, who, and we're stewards to, you know, our residents' money. I just, again, I don't think it sets a great precedent.
I agree. I think you're exactly right. The distinction that I would draw is that the reserve fund, we've already drawn down on in the past. We have not done that with OPEB. We're also relatively recently into this OPEB repayment cycle, which means that tapping the OPEB monies would be, we've been doing this for just a couple of years. We've very quickly gone from this money sacrosanct, and we're going to fulfill the township's obligations, to we are really going to raid this whenever we need to, which I don't love. On that, I agree. We need to build a gap.
Bill, the $7 million on all other revenue, it went, all other revenue went from 12 in the budget to 10 in the forecast, and now you have it down at four. What's driving that?
Down to seven. Yeah, no, but it fluctuates greatly. And the biggest component of that, well, there's two. First of all, it's the transfers. So when we're comparing 2018 budget versus forecast, transfers coming back from the sewer fund were estimated at three and a half. It's only going to be, just, it's going to be shy of three. So there's roughly $600,000 difference there. Another big one is, all other revenue includes our permitting activity. And the reason for the reduction, or the, one of the reasons for the reduction from 18 to 19 is that in 2018, we realized significant permitting revenue from the Villanova Project, and a couple other larger one-time revenues that we don't, we don't predict in 2019. It's, yeah, there's just nothing on the table that would suggest to us that a project like that's coming down the road. So that's, that's the, one of the primary reasons for such a big reduction going into 19 on that front.
In this case, what we see is, it's not a matter of spending down the reserves. What we are doing is making up for a lower-than-forecast, or lower-than-budgeted business revenues. And that's what makes this unique. It's not an arbitrary whim of this board to spend down reserves. This is a case where we had an actual, look at, look, our projection was, it's about $2 million, projected $2 million more than was, than we expect to realize. And that is what's driving this, this budget discussion tonight. And I think that it's clear what the administration is recommending and what their priorities are. The administration, Bill and Bob Z, have recommended that we not fund and not make that OPEB payment. Bob has also recommended 0% tax increase, which I agree with. My only caveat would be to fund the projects that this board committed to funding. And that would reduce the fund balance. But again, it's not because it's a whim of this board. It's exigent circumstances based on lower-than-anticipated business revenues, which, again, I anticipated, and I had warned this board about because of our over-aggressive contingent fee auditor. And I've heard many people complain about how their taxes in this township are onerous, and that they were moving out. And I think that that is what's driving it. However, we can argue about that, but the fact of it is, is that we have a shortfall due to business tax revenues. That's what's driving this analysis, Jack. It's not, it's not a matter of anybody on this board saying, let's just raid the reserve funds. Although, I could make the argument that we should reduce the reserve because we should not keep more of the people's money than is necessary, and I think that that's too high. And I voted against that, that level in 2014 when we put it in place.
Just real quick with regard to the business tax audits, is the fact that, I mean, that keeps getting brought up, that it's contingent-based. The number of audits is, has gone down significantly over the last, it's since we entered into that agreement. So the fact that the revenue on business taxes has gone down is completely separate from the audit argument.
I don't see it.
The two are not related.
I don't, I think that they are directly related, and the people, the businesses in this township know that they are facing a three-mil grocery receipts tax, which is very onerous, and that the township will, has an onerous and aggressive style of enforcement. And that is out there, and the businesses know it, especially money managers and other professionals.
All right. Anything else in this conversation? Mr. White, anything else you want to add?
The one thing I do want to touch on that is the importance of the reserves. And I know it's, it's easy to look at such a big number and immediately react that it might be too high. Again, going back to the township's credit rating, which I know is, is a, is somewhat, well, not somewhat, it is a subjective metric. But some of the things, or some of the items that Moody's has identified as helping or puts Radnor in a strong financial position is that we have strong fiscal policies, the fund balance being one of those, if not the strongest fiscal policy. Prior reviews have also included that boards, prior boards were willing to adjust taxes when necessary, and that the one area Moody's identified as an opportunity for the township to increase its rating, which I should say is the AA1, we are one notch below AAA, so we are fantastic rating, is higher reserves, in Moody's opinion, would help the township move from AA1 to AAA. I'm not advocating for higher reserves. We spent a lot of time a number of years ago nailing down on 25%. One of the discussions we had then, and it's, it's very relevant today, is if, if we didn't have the 8 million or the 25% policy, and we weren't holding that in reserve, if, say, we, let's say we kept it at 4 million or 5 million even. And what we've learned in the last two years is that we could quickly have to send $4 million to the sanitary sewer fund, because there's no cash there. So now we have a million in the general fund. And if business taxes decreased by 2 million in one year, now we're immediately in a deficit situation. And in order to make that up, in order to continue to provide service, it would take a large tax adjustment to do that. So by having the stronger reserves, it actually helps prevent from having huge real estate tax adjustments, which, at the end of the day, benefits the taxpaying public, so that there's some built-in assurances that they won't get hit in any given year with a huge percentage adjustment.
Why not, why not have Act 511 revenues budgeted closer to the actual 2018 number then, Bill?
The 12.6? We certainly could. We talked about that at the first, back in early October. The 2018 forecast includes a handful of refunds that are, were hopefully one-year adjustments. So we're anticipating going back to, and I showed this graph earlier, but the, what's, what would be considered a new normal for the business taxes, since the growth was roughly $8.5 million, 2017, or 2018, we dipped down. So 2019, while it looks like a huge increase, it does put us back on par with the four years preceding.
Understood. It was because of refunds. That makes one-time, one-time events. Well, here's my question. Manager Zinkowski, if we follow your budget and put 0 for OPEB, and have 0% tax increase, when would these other projects be hashed out and paid for? Is that going to be a 2020? Are we deferring all capital for a year? Or what is, what is your concept, Bob, on what happens with those projects? Is it a 19, or 20, or later expense?
The hope would be that the conversation would be had at the board level. You could accomplish some of these in 2019, the hope would be. But given some of these, even if the board's set on some of those projects, it's a go, some of those may be only in design phase in those particular, in 19, which would be a dramatically less, smaller dollar amount that would be spent within 19 as the plan is developed by the board. So the intent is, with the discussion of the board and direction, whether the board has an appetite to borrow some, and also defer this, set the plan out, as I go back to Bill's point of smoothing this out, and determine what that number is going to be. It could be a lot smaller, once the board goes through this and say, these are projects that we can probably push out several years before we start the design phase and...
Or it could be larger.
Absolutely, it could be. And that's why it's, it's the unknown of where we are until the board determines that.
So what I'm hearing is that even if we use the 7% or the 9% or the 6%, we still are looking at additional revenues needed for projects in 2019, and it's going to be on top of that, no matter, no matter what. So again, I would propose we take the recommendation of staff, have 0% increase, use the 0% contribution as recommended by staff to, for the OPEB, and then do the projects that were committed in 20, in this past year, and put those into the budget. And if we spend less on them, we spend less, but they're in the budget. And then hash out those other projects, and that long-term, that are the not included category. I think that's the best all-around, and spend down, and make a plan on, on the reserve, if you, if this board feels that it's so necessary.
All right. Any additional comments? Then we will move on with Ordinance 2018-17, introduction, the adoption of the final comprehensive budget for 2019 by setting the township real estate tax millage and adopting appropriations for 2019.
We need the full board.
Yeah, we do need the full board. I don't know where Jack and Sean are.
Go ahead. This, this is the item, let's, let's...
Well, I don't know. Bill, is there something?
Raise it. I insist that we do the item. Make, make the motion.
So can I get a motion to adopt the final, so...
So moved.
I move when you take the final report.
No, here he comes. Gentlemen, we've got Ordinance 2018-17, the introduction, the adoption of the final comprehensive budget for 2019 by setting the township real estate tax millage and adopting appropriations for 2019. Mr. White, what do you need, you need us to...
Yes, Section 2 of the ordinance spells out what the 2019 millage rate will be in terms of mills. Right now, we have those blank. So we just need the board to vote on what you want the millage rate to be for next year. We'll fill in those blanks accordingly, and then advertise with the completed ordinance, advertise the completed ordinance for the December 10th board meeting for final adoption.
Move that the millage rate be 3.9228 as recommended by staff.
I'll second it.
Any Commissioner comment to the motion on the floor?
Yeah, I mean, I'll kind of summarize what, what Jake and Rich said, which I agree with. We don't have the money for the OPEB contribution, in my opinion. We also don't have a real capital plan. So with that being said, I think we should move forward with Bob's recommendation, keep things status quo, and then we will work on this with that nice calendar of extra meetings next year, and develop a, develop a capital plan. If we can't develop one next year with all those extra meetings, God help us.
Any other Commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? All right. Oh, sorry. Evening.
Good evening. I think these discussions have been very interesting, and it's been my experience observing this Board of Commissioners, that we either pay now or we pay later. And I think we've, I've sat through many meetings where we've heard Commissioners not willing to raise the taxes that were necessary to maintain and our infrastructure, and we are now paying the price. We are also paying the price for living on revenue that has been created by development, which at some time is finite. Further, we are paying the cost for many of our properties that were once revenue generating, that are now in the hands of nonprofits that no longer can provide that kind of support that we need for our budget. I think we have tough decisions to be made. I think most of us know we can't go to the grocery store, we can't buy gasoline, we can't do other things in our life that we did 10 years ago at the same price. So I think we really need to be realistic, and at the same time, provide what is expected for those people who live in Radnor Township and who benefit from their services and want to maintain the quality of life that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto. Any other public comment?
Sarah Pillings from Garrett Hill. I just wish I could generate more money than I've got so I could pay your taxes. But I really want to answer something to Rich. For years, I went to zoning and planning. And this King of Prussia Road, Pine Road thing were advantages we gave, if my memory is right, advantages we gave Eastern and Cabrini if they agreed to do this. I don't think you have a right to say, no, drop it out.
No, I don't. I don't have, I said, I would be willing to. It would take a vote of four people on the board.
No, I think it goes way beyond that.
No, that's what it takes for...
Rich, this is public comment.
It's agreements we made with Eastern and with Cabrini, and it's an obligation. As hard as it will be for me, I think you need to raise taxes. To go into more and more and more of a deficit position, and I say that as a senior, I don't see how you can continue to push this can down the road. I've been attending these meetings since 1998, and there were many, many, many years. They kicked it down the road. And I quote Bill Spengler, sewers don't vote. And that's one of the reasons we're in the pickle we're in today. So I'm certainly not going to like it, and it's going to be difficult. But as a senior, you need to raise taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other... Any other comment? All right, then I will go ahead and call the vote, but unfortunately, I did not write down Commissioner Booker your millage rate.
It's 3.9228. It's the current rate. It represents a 0% tax increase as recommended by staff.
Okay, all those in favor to the current motion on the floor of the real estate tax millage being 3.9228 with a 0% tax increase, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails four to three. All right, so we need to set a millage. Do I have a motion for a millage?
So moved.
You need to say what it is.
I'm for, I don't, I'm for 7.5%.
Is that your, are you making a motion to raise the taxes by 7.5%?
Yeah, I would make a motion. Yes.
We need to calculate the millage.
What's the millage, Bill?
Bill, are you going to calculate that, what that would be? Or do we just say 7%?
No, it's 4.217.
Yeah, so the total millage rate would be 4.2170.
It's what, an extra, on average, an extra $75 a month or a year per household?
For the average, it'd be about 95. For the median, 79.
So.
All right, do I have a second for the motion on the floor for an increase in the millage rate to 4.2170?
I'll second that.
All right. Is there any commissioner comment to the motion on the floor?
So my number is actually a 6% increase, not a 7.5% increase. We've got to fund the deficit somehow. I think that the distinction between the two is negligible for the median household. And as between the two, I'm happy to vote for 7.5. I know that's a little bit more, but I just don't see a meaningful increase between the two.
So you seconded it, so you're willing to go with, you are going higher in your tax rate proposal than you originally planned. You wanted six, and you're agreeing with Sean to go 7.5% tax increase. Am I correct?
That is, yep, what I just said.
And this is why I'm for 7.5%. Look at the Township Building. We have things for Santa Claus. We have great parks. We have great police, great public works, and it's time to pay the piper. And for an extra 5, 10, and it's not even $20, maybe for the higher end, $20 a month to get the services that we know, that we're used to, which is an intangible reason for why we live in Radnor. For me, I understand it's a cost that people aren't going to expect, people aren't necessarily going to see on their mortgage statements, but it, there comes a time where, you know, we can draw down our reserves, we can lay off employees. These are things that I think should be off the table. And I put that out in a newsletter. And the other big thing is that we haven't had a property increase in years. And if you look at the CPI, it increased 9.8% from 2013. So even a proposal of 7.5 is still under the inflation rate, and we're still not going to have to, we're still going to have to get caught up. And you can issue debt, issue bonds, and pay it off later. For instance, I was talking with Tammy Cohen, and she said that the price of material went up significantly for Emblington, the comfort station at Emblington Park. So $110,000 project may have gone up to 130, and I don't know if those are the numbers, but it was a five-digit, I believe it was a five-digit number. And the other thing as well, when you don't tap into reserves, I do think that it sets a strong fiscal policy for the board. And if the rates are too high, we can always lower them. If there is a surplus and we can't find anything good to do with it, which I don't think that's the case, I'm more than happy, and I will vote to give that money back in a reduction. So that's my feeling on this.
May I have the floor? With respect to Commissioner Farley's first point, taxes were last raised by this township in 2016, 4.6%. With a 7.5%, that would be about 12.1% increase over four years, divided by four, it's a 3% increase per year, which is above the CPI. Absolutely incorrect mathematically what Commissioner Farley just said.
No, I have.
May I have the floor? Point of order, point of order.
Commissioner Booker has the floor.
Thank you.
Please let him finish.
Thank you.
But try to make it succinct.
Secondly, people throwing around this average household, nobody's, almost nobody has an average. Everybody has a different assessment. The majority of my constituents will pay hundreds, hundreds more per year based on this. It's not just a matter of a few tens of dollars. Third, we are throwing our administration under the bus. The administration came to us with a recommendation. Township manager Zinkowski and finance director Bill White said, this is what you should do, 0%. This is what we recommend. And the Democrats' majority on this board is throwing our administration under the bus, rejecting their recommendation, and imposing their own will and taking more of the people's money for the government. It's other people, may I have the floor?
I'm trying to respond to.
May I have the floor? Point of order, point of order. Fourth point.
Yeah, make your point.
Fourth point. Once again, what we see here is a Democrat majority of tax and spend liberal policies, taxing at an arbitrary rate for arbitrary projects unknown even to them. And it's done, and it's partisan, and it's a Democrat movement. You see the Republicans voted for 0% to support our township staff.
I think we're done with the propaganda, so.
It's not propaganda, it's all truth.
Commissioner Booker, thank you.
It's truth, and it's real.
Commissioner Booker, thank you. Thank you. Okay, does someone have?
Lower taxes and waste and borrow.
Okay.
No, I would like to show that there has been a 9.8% increase. Is it possible to get the overhead here? Nope.
Sean, while you're working on that, I would like to just say, and I don't in any way want to stop you from speaking, but since we're taking a moment for the technology. Rich, you were the one who said that you do want to do the capital projects because they've all been voted on by the board. That was not in the manager's budget. You've rejected a recommendation. You're arbitrarily contending that, one, frankly, you're saying the Democrats, I'm not going to dress it up, you're saying there's a politically motivated movement among the Democrats to go against the recommendation of the administration. You've said that you don't want to do some of the projects that the previous boards have approved. You're saying that you do want to do other projects, which are not in the manager's recommendation. I'm going to defer to Sean because it looks like he's good to go, but I would reject the notion that the Democrats are unilaterally voting to get rid of the recommendation. We're exercising judgment in order to make sure the township is funded.
Again, the Democrats made the motion to raise the taxes.
We are not, we are not dealing in political propaganda. Thank you, Commissioner Booker.
Sean has the floor.
Sean has, Commissioner Farley has the board. No.
Rich, I'll be, okay. So, and this is hard to see if you can actually put this up. So here's the inflation rate from 2013, okay? And the 2018 is the year's not done. And that's done from one of the Fed bags. Now, if you go to the Bureau of Labor and you go to their website, and you can actually put the CPI calculator in there, I put that if you had $1,000 back in January of 2013, the same buying power today, so October, but really, again, it's not a full year, is 1,098.16%. So that's 9.8%.
But Sean, we're talking from 2016, not 2013.
I'm talking five years.
I'm talking 2016, when we last raised it. This board in 2016 raised taxes 4.6%. You just proposed 7.5%. That's two increases in four years, and it's 12% over those four years.
Thank you, Commissioner Booker. You've made that point already. Okay, Commissioner Nagel, do you have something you want to say?
Inane comment.
Well, I do. I support the 7.5%, although I also would prefer six, understanding that this is the first slide that Bill put up, which had the 6%. So you'll increase that to 7.5, make that correction. And then it has all the increases that were presented at our first meeting on the budget cycle, the 100 for the fire company and the 15 for the senior center and the full payment for OPEB. Just be clear that that's what this is. It's not just 7.5. It's these other elements, too.
Just one more. We will have another increase to the taxpayers when these projects, some are all, are approved in 2019. This is just the start, and it's really an obfuscation of what you're doing because it's 7.5% tonight, and it will be another 7, 8, 10% later this year.
It's called inflation, Rich.
19%, 18% in one year is inappropriate. It's bad government.
Could maybe any member of staff advise, are we actually allowed to increase millage rates again this year after tonight?
No. It's, 2019's rate will be set when this ordinance ultimately gets adopted in December, and then we cannot change it again until the 2020 real estate tax bills go out.
Bill, can we do projects and not pay for them in 2019? No.
I don't think our contractors.
No, we will have to pay for them, and whether you build it in with a millage, you write an ordinance, increase deficit spend, any projects approved this year, it will increase the tax rate. So if you want, and if you're holding on 7.5%, which is a huge increase, that means zero projects for this year. Put them in for next year, even the ones that we already approved. So we're at risk for liability from that.
All right.
So by the way, we can't pay for those two grants, those grants that we've applied for, so I don't know what you're going to do about that.
Is there any additional, any additional comment? I don't know. My number was six. I, you know, I think that we can get where we need to go with a 6%. 7.5 seems a little more to me, and I'm not as, I'm not as willing to say we would just have a surplus and, you know, then we could give it back. Because once you get a surplus, you usually don't give it back. So I'm, you know, I'm leaning definitely more towards six. I agree, you know, what sits in our lap is, you know, and I said this, I think, the last meeting or two meetings ago, you know, we have, there are a lot of cans that have been kicked down the road, and they are, you know, we now have to deal with that. In addition to that, in addition to the lower business privilege taxes coming forward and the permitting fees, things that were, you know, I think luxuries for us in the past. We don't have those now. And it is a, you know, it is a responsibility. We have a responsibility, and I don't think that we should push off the OPEB funding. I completely do not agree with that. You know, I sat on a school board where we saved, and we saved money so that we knew that we could pay for the retirement benefits that we needed to pay for. And it is foolish for us not to continue to pay for that because no matter what, that is always going to be there. So I do not agree with, I do not agree with not paying that. And I also disagree with the idea that we are throwing our staff under the bus. I think that we are trying to be responsible. I think that our staff has done a really good job of creating a budget, as I said, that has absolutely nothing in it pretty much that we can cut. There is nothing in that budget that we can cut that people don't count on, don't depend on, don't value here in Radnor. And, you know, I am, I think it's about time that we started to look at providing the resources that they need to fund the things we need. I mean, we're looking, we're looking at over $200,000 increase in trash disposal, trash and recycling disposal, over $200,000. And that is something that we don't control. So, you know, those are things that we need to, we need to take into account. And we also need, you know, Rich, you keep so flippantly saying the meeting schedule that I've set up. We need to start talking about these things before October. There is not enough time, and I agree with, I think Jake said it, you know, there is not enough time for us to make these decisions. We need to start planning. And, you know, I think that's a commitment that this board has to make. You know, I heard Luke say it, you know, I think that that's something we need to do. But right now, we need to make the tough decisions. So 7.5 is going to be tough for me. But we will go ahead and call the vote and see how it plays out.
Got one text that came in. It says, sell the rye field.
Thank you for that.
Arjuna, that was a text.
Thank you for that helpful comment, as usual, Rich.
Did we get public comment?
I'm going to ask for, is there any additional commissioner comment to this? Is there any staff?
One additional point. Again, I don't want to have more meetings, Lisa, you're absolutely right. I believe that the projects that were on the recommended list, we had hashed out and we had approved them. That is why I just don't want to do work again. So I disagree with you how you're characterizing it. It's not, sure, I don't want to go to the meetings, but I go to almost all the meetings. I contribute. I study. I prepare as my duty. What I don't want to do is to redo work that we already did. That's the main issue. And it was $900,000 in projects. I was willing to forego the one, $231,000 if I had three other, if I had three.
All right, and now I'm going to call for staff comment. Is there any additional staff comment? Is there any public comment to the motion on the floor to raising the millage to 4.2170? All right, then I'm going to go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of the motion on the floor to raise the Township Real Estate Tax Millage to 4.2170, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. All right. So we still need to set a tax millage.
I'm going to, first off, ask for staff assistance in telling me what the millage rate is. It's 6% increase, and then I'm going to move for whatever that number is. Looks like 4.7382.
4.4.
No, 4.1582. So I would move for, to set the millage rate at 4.1582%.
Second.
I said percent, I meant mills, obviously.
All right, any commissioner comment to the motion to raise the millage to 1.582?
So we've, we've talked about this for a lot of time, obviously, at this point. The one point that I'd like to stress is that my real concern is that we do not have a plan to cover the deficit for next year, no matter what it is we do. If we invade the reserve and we have to pay it back, if we defer paying OPEB and we decide to pay that back next year, if we don't increase the millage rate at the moment, we have no plan for how we're going to pay that money back next year, which leaves us in the exact same position next year, except it's probably worse because I anticipate the business taxes going down. This will not fund 100% of that. I think that that gives us some wiggle room for, you know, hopefully the business taxes go up and we won't have to confront that issue. It also means that we are going to have to be working for much of next year to find other sources of revenue and other savings, and hopefully that will fund the difference for next year. And if we don't get there, then yeah, we may have to talk about raising it again in 2019 for calendar 2020, but I don't want to make that decision and jump from 6% to 10%, 15%. I mean, we talked last week about to fund everything, we'd have to increase it by 47%. And that's not keeping faith with residents. So this gives us the opportunity to keep the problem manageable for next year, hopefully deal with the problem next year. And if we can't before this time next year, then we'll have to make the same decision.
Any other comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment to the motion on the floor? All right, I am going to call the vote. All those in favor of raising the millage to 4.1582, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to three. All right, on to ordinance 2018-18, introduction, adoption of the 2019 sanitary sewer rent rate. Mr. White.
So this is the same, same dance, new song. The ordinance, as included in the board packet now in section three, has a blank for what the annual sewer charge for the real, for all the accounts for 2019 at a rate per 1,000 gallons of water used in 2018. We just need the board to fill in the blank.
All right. So I think what had been initially discussed was the 10 percent increase, which kind of been set out by the prior board. And I think that raised it, what, to $7.19 or something like that? I forget exactly. So can I get a motion?
6:40.
What is it? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So what is that, 6.9?
Yeah, it's $7.14.
What is 6.49? What's the unit? Dollars per what?
Thousand gallons.
So your motion is 6.49 to increase it from $6.49 per thousand gallons to $7.14 per thousand gallons sewer rate rental rate?
Are you making the motion?
No. I'm just clarifying, clarifying what you just, is that what you're saying? Not making the motion, just clarifying, so I understand.
Okay. So that is what is, has we've discussed. I don't know. I need a motion.
Second.
Well, did someone make the initial motion? All right, I'm making the motion. All right, so I have a motion on the floor and a second. Any commissioner discussion?
Again, tax increases of in excess of 2 or 3 percent are inappropriate under the given circumstances. It's bad government and it's detrimental to the people and to the constituents. $7.14 represents a 10 percent raise in sewer rental fee for the second straight year in a row, on top of what you've already approved as a 6 percent tax increase on the millage, the second in four years. And you still have projects that you'll want to do in 2019 that will also need to be provided for in that year. And either deficit spending will have to occur or you'll increase the 2020 millage rate that much more to make up for the expenditures in 2019. This is bad planning. This is inappropriate and this goes against what we should be doing as politicians, as people governing the township. It's too much and I won't be supporting it.
So what is the proposal, then?
The motion's on the floor and I'm making comments.
No, but I understand that. But you're saying you don't want to have a tax increase. It costs more money for our toilets to flush and for what's inside to go somewhere. How do you want to pay for that? You've been talking all night. You're not talking now. Come on.
That's inappropriate reference. What my suggestion would be is to increase the sewer rent only to the extent, as I pointed out earlier this evening, to the extent of the additional indebtedness incurred with respect to the sanitary sewer. And that was the $4.5 million in notes. We would take that additional marginal debt service and split that between all the users and the rate would reflect only that amount.
But that doesn't fund the entire, that doesn't fund the whole thing. That won't keep the toilets working.
It will keep the toilets working. It will, we don't know what it's going to be. All of this will continue to operate and I disagree with you. The sewers will work and, once again, we see a Democrat majority that wants to inflict an additional tax.
Papaganda, no.
Every time I say, every time I say the truth, you want to interrupt.
Because, Rich, that has nothing to do with...
What you have to do is you have to live with what you're doing. You're making the vote, you're proposing it, and now go ahead and do it.
So, Rich, do you have any concrete numbers to back up your claims?
Yeah, I have many concrete numbers to back up the claims. I've made the points.
Can we see them? I mean, can I see them? Can you show them? I mean...
I'm seeing negative numbers up there.
Yeah, it's red, it's in parentheses. It looks like it's negative to me.
Yeah. I mean, can you show your alternative numbers? That the group can read?
Sorry, can you show your alternative numbers to get to the, you know, your bottom line number? Because I just don't see the math adding up.
Because you don't have the debt that's been borrowed in there.
But, Rich, that's exactly the point. I mean, we've decided to keep the sewer system, so you're going to have to pay for it from one pocket or another. I just, you just want to, I just, I feel that you just want to grandstand with this and it's, I don't, I don't, I don't get it.
I feel that you just want to tax and spend. 10 percent increases over two years is too much. It's inappropriate.
All right.
If the spending needs to go down on the sewer system, then you should reduce the spending. It doesn't. The sewers will continue to work.
So we've already had to borrow, we've already had to borrow 4.5 million to pay back projects, emergency projects, and fund things that we know we need to do.
Again, as I said last meeting and was in the paper by an excellent article by Linda Stein, we as government have certain functions that we've taken on. Sanitary sewers, that's been a longtime purview of the government. Without that, what did we have? We had people dumping buckets in the streets. It was unsanitary, caused disease. We now have taken on that role. We provide this as a service for the health of the people. Same with water and many other, police and other functions. We must, as our duty, this is what government does. Now, while I disagree, if we didn't have enough money this year, then it would have shut down already. What I'm proposing is we increase the rates to match what the actual increase in expenditure is due to the debt. We don't know where the water billing is going to be. It's all a projection and my view is you are increasing taxes too much on the constituents, no matter how you slice it.
Okay. You've made that point.
But, Rich, but looking at sewer numbers, they're not forward-looking. I mean, it takes three months or six months.
But in this case, Rich, you want to ignore the recommendations from staff. In the last case, you wanted to follow.
No, no. This recommendation was this board. We said it was, this board came up with 20 percent increases. Lisa said at the beginning, this board set that out there. I disagreed with it last year. I disagree with it this year.
Okay, I think we've gotten that point. Is there any other comment from the commissioners? Is there any staff comment? Any public comment? All right, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of increasing the sewer rent fee, oh, and you took the numbers down, Bill, from $6.49 to $7.14, which equates to a 10 percent increase, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes five to two. All right. On to ordinance 2018-19, adoption of the 2019 consolidated fee schedule for the township effective January 1st, 2019. May I get a motion to approve? A second.
Second.
All right. Any commissioner comment to the motion on the floor? Mr. White, do you have anything you want to say or add or?
Not necessarily in this item. Hopefully, the board members had an opportunity to read through the fee schedule. Any of the changes were highlighted in yellow and then there was a brief narrative at the end of each section to explain. There weren't many changes being proposed for next year. In almost every case, it was either to offset higher costs that the township's incurring or to try to streamline some processes in our permitting and engineering review.
And just for the, because this is, this was new to me this year and so I asked you, I sent you a lot of questions and thank you very much for answering them all. This is, this is completely separate from the budget. This is not, these fees are not used to raise revenue. These are completely, completely separate and basically cover our cost of doing business around this stuff, correct?
For the, yes. It should be considered under its own merits. In many cases, the fees that are consolidated in this document exist elsewhere throughout our code. The idea of chapter 162 is to bring it all together and consolidate into one document to make it easier for the general public to understand what the township's fees are. It's separate from the budget in that it's not establishing tax rates or sewer rent rates, which, as we just stepped through, have their own ordinances. So I hope that helps answer that.
And I think for the public, there aren't a lot of significant increases, I think. The only ones are some of the saldo fees and the fee for the, for trash.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you. Bill, last year, and Bob, last year, I requested that we institute a fee for truck drivers who hit the bridge, King of Pressure Road. We asked John Rice to look at that, with a number, and I've talked to many people, many constituents, should be somewhere 2, 3, 5, $10,000 per strike that the trucking company would need to pay. The theory being it would cover police and other cleanup, et cetera. Whatever happened to that? And can we put that in here? And is it, if it is in here, where is it?
John Rice is working on that and I believe it should be in front of the board at your next meeting with the penalties and fines with that. So that can always be, based on how the board said it before, by resolution, you can always amend that schedule once the board approves it, the fee schedule.
Okay. Can you follow up and make sure he has that?
Peter's sitting right here.
All right, Peter, we really, we really need that. It's a major issue. As people know, King of Pressure Road near my neighborhood has been hit 100 times since 2008 and we really need fines that are going to be commensurate with the expense to the township and therefore to the taxpayers in cleaning those people up, cleaning those up. And it's almost always people outside of the township. The second issue I see, I'm looking at a new fee in 2019 called Fee for Work Without Permits. And the fee ranges from 200 to $1,250. I want to find out where this came from and also to say that I object to this because we are going to get complaints by the homeowner who does some work and later finds out that he's got, that he has an inspection and we get a fine. If we have, we have a homeowner that has to pay $1,250 because they forgot to get a permit or even 650, I think you're going to make a lot of people angry. I don't think we should do this.
Yeah, but what about the ones that skirt it and do improper work? I mean, that's the problem.
I think what it is, is Kevin had come up with this, that there are a lot of contractors not pulling the appropriate permits and then when it's found that the work was done wrong. And I believe because of the scale, it's, it increases as you continue to violate this. So it would be a penalty to a contractor, maybe at the first time it's 200, but then if it happens again, then the ability to escalate that also...
It doesn't say the contractor. It's, and ultimately, the homeowners are going to pay this, even if it is a contractor.
It should be, it's going to go after whomever, you know, initiated the work. Now, if a homeowner's doing work, again, there's going to be latitude in there that if they just forgot to do something. But a lot of this is based on contractors not getting permits and finding out that all of a sudden there are dumpsters sitting in front of yards and then all of a sudden here's an addition going on without any permits on this at all. And the impacts, and we've been getting a lot of complaints from residents, were saying, how is, you know, there's work being done, did they pull permits? And the answer is no. So that's why we're putting this in place.
So did this come out of that issue that we had with that one store on North Wayne that we found after the fact? Was that, that wasn't this?
No, this is based on a number of other items and some of it, commissioners calling in from residents that are saying, here's work being done at a great scale. This is not something small as a resident that wants to put up drywall or maybe change an electrical outlet. This is something of significant work that's taking place.
The lowest fine is construction costs up to $10,000. And as you know, a lot of homeowners will call their brother-in-law, the electrician, to come out and, you know, work on the house. And I can honestly see that he might not, he might not know he's going to, he could end up getting hit with this and we're going to get a lot of complaints. I heard you say, well, there's be some leniency, but there's no leniency on this sheet.
I just think a lot of this comes down to is work being, work being completed without permits.
Could you maybe clarify? Because I don't quite understand. Is the concept, if you do work that doesn't require a permit, you would have to pay an additional fee? Or is it just if you do work that does require a permit and you don't go and get one, you pay a fee?
The latter. This is, this is actually a very common, most might, the townships we represent, actually what they do is they double the assessed fee, which would actually be great, much more than what you're seeing here. But that's a very, very common practice because there's a lot of people out there who think it's easier to ask for forgiveness than to ask for permission. And they intentionally do the work to try to avoid the fee and, you know, and then when they get caught, they just say, they just apply for it and they get it. And there's no penalty whatsoever. So when they, they do it to avoid the fee and they get away with it, great. And if they don't, they just pay the fee they were going to have to pay in the first place. So this is a way to actually make it, you know, make it painful to intentionally do it. And it doesn't catch the average homeowner who's just doing work and not realizing, oh, I need, that's not the way it works. It's not the way, it's imposed. It goes after the serial violators who know better.
Those are licensed contractors, right? Sorry.
Yes.
Is there any reason right now, if I were a licensed contractor, other than I want the goodwill of the township, I want to be a good neighbor, I want to be a good corporate citizen, to pay for a permit?
Well, other than just to do the right moral legal thing, you know, there's always, yeah, you always can get caught, depending on the project. Obviously, if there's outdoor work, someone can see it, a neighbor could complain. But, you know, if you do minor indoor work, you know, more likely than not, no one's going to notice.
But you're saying that right now, even if somebody does notice and you get called in, there's no downside. The worst-case scenario is you pay the permit fees.
Exactly. If you're doing something that's legal and your only problem is you fail to apply for the permit and pay the fee, all you do is pay the fee. So there is, there is no penalty for avoiding it.
Maybe I shouldn't say this while we're on television, but it sounds like our existing fee schedule has no enforcement mechanism, unless we pass this.
Well, there's an, yeah, there's no additional enforcement mechanism.
If we catch them, we make them pay the permits.
Yeah.
Well, but that, so if we, the same thing happens today, why don't you make them pay the fee?
You make them pay the fee, but they don't pay anything additional.
So then this is in addition to...
There's no penalty for avoiding pulling a permit.
What's the appeal process?
To paying a fee?
Paying the fine.
The fine, you spend more time on employee, you know, time on getting a fine than you're going to get a fine out of them. If you get a fine, you have to go to DJ court, you're not going to get more than a couple hundred bucks, if that. It's going to take hours of the employees' time, not counting my time if I have to go down there for it.
I think Sean...
You're losing money that way.
I think Sean is saying, what's the appeals process for this $200 fee for work without a permit?
Correct.
If there were one.
Okay, so if you want to appeal the building code officials, you go to the Code Appeals Board and that's the appeals process.
And then you would appeal that to, what, a district court?
No, well, no. If you didn't like that decision, you would go to county court. You only go to district court if you're, township's the only one who goes to district court because we're attempting to get fines.
So, again, it just, I don't know if it's cost prohibitive for the township where the township's not going to want to go to court for a $1,000 fine. It's just not worth your time.
No, it isn't. And they don't because it's, you lose money in the long run. And you're not going to, and you're not going to get, none of the DJs, unless it's a serial offender who's in front of that judge numerous times, you're not going to get a fine that actually covers the township costs to prosecute that case.
So will there be some sort of, you know, I'm going to ask this, like public information campaign or something so that people have a better awareness or understand that this is a potential? So, you know, because to me, it seems like, I mean, the permits are there also, you know, to protect people so that they know the work is getting done and the work is being done properly. So how does that work in other, I mean, I just don't want it to be buried somewhere.
It's, you can have, you know, as your staff hand out, you can put it on the building application. I don't know exactly how this township's application form is laid out. Many townships, they hand out the fee schedule with the application. They... Many townships, they hand out the fee schedule with the application, they hand out notices with the application saying, please be aware. And so it's, yeah, it's not something, you don't want to bury it, that doesn't make any sense. You want to make sure it's out there because you want it as a enforcement mechanism to make sure people do, you know, undertake this and do pull the permits they need to pull.
Okay. Any other questions?
I noticed on the fee schedule at the end that Grim Bean at Thatcher has highlighted $190 per hour. I don't, I can't tell if that's an increase or if that's just correcting that Steven Kramer who's no longer with the firm. Is $190 an hour, is that an increase?
No, that's correct. There was two, two issues with that. My, I actually, Peter is my middle name, so it's actually H. Peter Nelson, not that I really care. But yes, Mr. Kramer is no longer with the firm. He actually works for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in Harrisburg now.
And the $190 per hour, that's an increase?
Nope. That, I believe, has been that ever since we've been hired. I don't think we've increased our fees since we've been hired.
All right. And you're going to be adding Mary to that list, right?
We'll be adding Mary, and we actually have a new associate to replace Mr. Kramer, who will be starting on Monday.
Okay. Any other questions on the fee schedule? All right, any staff comments? Any public comment? All right. All those in favor of ordinance 2018-19 introduction, the adoption of the 2019 consolidated fee schedule for the township effective January 1st, 2019, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes six to one. Okay. Now, we are on to Resolution 2018-131, authorizing Meliora Design to provide design permitting and construction drawings for the West Wayne Preserve Stormwater Management Project and flood reduction options for the Darby Creek watershed at a cost of $185,889. I get a motion to approve. Have a second?
Second.
Maybe before we have comment, I'm going to request, I'd actually like a little bit more time to talk and look at this. I'd like to see it on the, on the next agenda, which I think is December 10th. Joe's correcting me, so I'm going to move to table.
Second.
All right, there is a motion on the floor to table Resolution 2018-131.
Point of order, we already had the motion to approve first. I think you got to vote on that first unless they withdraw.
Table overrides all that.
Thank you, though. All those in favor of the motion on the floor to table Resolution 2018-131 until the December meeting, December 10th meeting, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to three. Item H, Penn Medicine, 145 King of Pressure Road Caucus Financial Subdivision Plan. Mr. Falcone, I think you're on.
Good evening, everyone. We are here in pursuit of a financial subdivision of the 145 King of Pressure Road property. As you may recall, going through the ordinance amendment process, a provision was added to the ordinance that allowed for a financial subdivision of the property. What that essentially means is you can draw a line on the property to allow you to convey fee simple title to a portion of the property for financing purposes or outsales, much like a condominium or a UPCA on a property. The underlying development of the property, however, is subject to the overall development, which is approved. In this case, that's the initial land development plan for the 145 site, which has the development that you all approved. So what we're doing here is totally compliant with the ordinance as it was amended. We're drawing a line essentially down the middle of the property to separate the ambulatory care facility from the opposite side of the property. As you may all have read, Brandywine is purchasing the property, so they'll be taking the remainder of the property through development. But there is no change to the underlying plan that was approved. It's exactly as you all saw, and the plan that was submitted as part of the financial subdivision is the exact land development plan that was approved without any change. Rich?
Are you going to show that?
I think you all have it, but this is it. So the line I'm referencing is shown here down the middle of the property. The jog out in the middle is for stormwater purposes, but really divides the property as we, as we're showing there. But per the ordinance, you can really draw lines wherever you want on the property. Again, it doesn't change the overall development, and the property must remain compliant with the approved plan. And as part of this process, as you move through it, we will have to submit to the township a document which shows cross easements to allow for the maintenance and use of the property by the financially subdivided parcels therein. So that would be part of our approval of this as well, and we'll work with the solicitor on that. That gets recorded against the property.
Any questions from the commissioners?
I have, but I'll let the other commissioners go first.
I have no questions. I mean, so everything that is developed on that side will still go through land planning?
Absolutely, comes back through as you had approved. It'll come through the land development process. And again, so just to be very clear, the plan that you see here with the line is the exact same plan that this board approved, so, and that will be recorded as part of the land development process here. So there are no changes. This is, again, just for financial subdivision purposes, which is permitted under the ordinance. Rich?
First question, I don't remember seeing that line on any drawings before. What drawing, that financial subdivision line, what drawing did that appear on in the past?
It's the financial subdivision plan. So this is the first time you're seeing that line. The underlying plan is the, as I mentioned, the approved land development plan. This is the first time we are before you for a financial subdivision.
So this was not as we had seen previously?
So I think you're maybe misunderstanding, Rich. The underlying plan, we're clear what underlying plan means, that's the plan underlying here, that is the approved land development plan that you approved. There is a line on it now, which is a financial subdivision line. This is the first time you're seeing that line. So that line is new as part of this process.
So, again, I think that's something different than what you said before.
I don't think so.
This line is new, this is, we've never seen this before. The underlying plan does not come into play with respect to this existing line. So this line is a new thing, and it's unusual. I don't remember ever even talking about a jog out like that, but...
So that's irrelevant, you understand?
So wait, I have a question for counsel, for solicitor. Is there any, there's no provisions regarding these lines being straight or any, is there anything regarding financial subdivisions, either similar to flag lot rules, anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Purely out of curiosity, why isn't it straight? I don't think it makes a difference, I'm just interested.
If you, there are notes on the plan. What they have here, there are facilities, kind of utilities and stormwater management that's located in the middle. So rather than go right through them, we're assigning them to one of the lots as opposed to then dealing with kind of overall maintenance. So it's for convenience purposes, but that's kind of the beauty of the financial subdivision. You can really draw the lines wherever you want. Oftentimes, this is, this is a, an established process, but you'll see in other office parks, they'll draw the lines directly around buildings and kind of create common areas and things like that. So in this case, they're just drawing it generally down the middle. But the nature is you can draw the line wherever you want.
Next question. What is the exact interest that is being conveyed? You said it was fee simple, but it's, it's not a fee simple, it's a surface? Is it an easement? Is it a surface right? What's the, what's the real estate interest being conveyed?
It's a fee simple, you deed it. It's like a condo.
Does it include subsurface rights?
You get the entire property, it's a fee simple interest, Rich. Remember, so more commonly, which I know you're aware of, so you can UPCA a property and Plan Community Act. And what you do in that instance is you're, you're subject to the overall development, but you're deeding out fee simple interest to all of your units. But still, those units are subject to the overall development plan for the property. So what it allows for is development within a community that doesn't have to meet the setbacks, but still has to be subject to the overall regulations for the master development of the property.
So the interest is no different than any other real estate interest? It includes all subsurface rights, all easements, all air rights, and any other pertinent?
You're transferring right, the interest to that financially subdivided parcel.
Except for, this line is not a line for saldo purposes? What's, what's the difference, Peter? What's the difference in this line between a typical subdivision and this so-called financial, financially engineered subdivision?
The difference is, is the line doesn't have to comply with all the other ordinance requirements. It's just a line on a piece of paper.
Is it a property line that's recorded like any other property line in the land records at the township, at the county?
This particular plan will be recorded, just like a condo plan is recorded, and the, I do believe the Tax Assessment Bureau assigns a new tax parcel number to it, just like they do for individual condo units.
That's correct.
And trustees, the trustees retain what rights on that, on that property? None until we see the easements? There's no, does university, do trustees of the University of Pennsylvania retain any rights on that financially subdivided property?
So as we had mentioned earlier, so this property in its entirety is being sold, and Penn is leasing it back.
Well, just answer the question. Is there any retained rights on that property?
They're going to have a leasehold interest, Rich. That is a right.
So explain that. So who will have a leasehold interest?
The trustees will have a leasehold interest.
So Penn is going to, this is a sale leaseback, is what you're saying?
But so, I'm giving you this information, it's irrelevant.
I don't, I think it's very relevant.
Well, you're wrong.
Bob, my opinion is, I'm correct. My opinion is you're wrong. It's relevant to me and my constituents, so you're wrong.
But no, the relevance, the relevance, Rich.
Counselor, you are wrong. It is relevant.
It's not relevant to a financial subdivision. The questions you're asking are not relevant. They may be inquiring minds want to know, and I'm happy to answer them, but they're not relevant to this process.
You're being very impertinent. It's relevant, and there's going to be a leasehold interest that Penn is retaining.
But that's not a part of the application.
So this is a sale, sale leaseback. Thank you. That's, that's fine. Thank you.
But it's not a part of the application.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you. Don't argue, don't argue with the commissioners.
Rich, Rich.
Can we make this productive, please?
Don't, don't argue.
Knock it off.
I have, I have, I have, I have the floor. Point of order.
Rich, I am, Rich.
Commissioner Nagel is out of order once again.
Rich.
May I continue, please?
Point of order for a moment.
May I continue?
Please, I'm going to ask you, if you're asking someone who is at the podium a question, please allow them to answer.
I did.
I don't think you did.
I, I did.
Please allow Mr. Falcone to answer your question.
I asked him to answer a question, and he provided his own opinions, which I'm not asking for.
He's answering the question.
Thank you. So please, no opinions, thank you. So one of the issues that's come up with respect to this is the issue of the trail. There was to be a trail moved from the school district property across the street onto this property, and Penn had agreed to do that.
Oh, Rich, that's nothing to do with this application.
You're incorrect and has nothing to do with the financial subdivision.
Point of order, I have the floor. This is a subdivision, all issues are before this board.
That's not accurate, Rich.
Commissioner Booker, that is inaccurate, what you're stating is inaccurate.
All issue, this is a caucus, all issues are before this board and properly before this board. Again, no opinions. This is a relevant issue. So what, what, as counsel for the University of Pennsylvania, what is your explanation as to why there is no trail on that property as you agreed?
First of all, I have absolutely no idea what you're talking about.
The trail, there was a trail designed by Meliora, it's part of the trail plan, it was agreed to.
Commissioner Booker, your...
Commissioner, Commissioner...
Commissioner Booker, your line of questioning, perhaps...
Commissioner Borowski, I'm asking a question, I have the floor, don't I? Let me answer the question.
So you are, so what you are saying is not true.
It is true. What I am saying is 100% true.
The trail was never supposed to be on the other side of the street.
The trail was going to be on the school district's property. Penn met with the school district, the school district said, can you move the trail to your property and save the trees on the school district property? And the University of Pennsylvania agreed.
Rich, we do have, we do have a trail on our property.
Where is the trail moving from, from the, from the school district property onto this property?
What the school district does with their property is between the school district and the township and whoever else.
I'm talking about what you agreed with the school district to move the trail there.
We are putting a trail on our property, Rich, but I...
Where's the trail?
The trail runs from, along the entire front of the property. It moves up and to the east, which is this way, here's the north arrow. So the trail is going to run down along, there is a path. It comes up, it breaks off King of Pressure Road, and Penn has agreed to take it all the way back out to Route 30. Is that correct, Bob? And we are doing that. Now, if the school...
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
Sure. Are you going to listen?
I, I may or may not, it depends on if you're making sense.
If anybody else, if the school district found a way to move their prop...
Please talk into the mic.
If the school district found a way to move their trail over here, we'd be happy to accommodate them on that. We can only put a trail on our property, and we're doing that. We're running it along the entirety of our property and out to Route 30. We can't do anything more than that, Rich. We can't go on to the school district's property and help them over there. All we can do is construct a path across the entirety of our property and beyond. We're going beyond our property out to Route 30. What else do you want?
So what you're saying is that you are moving the trail from the school district on to, on a property, onto your property?
That's not what, I'm saying we're running a trail along the entirety of our property.
So you're not moving the school district trail as you agree?
Rich, I'm sorry.
Rich, I'm not exactly sure what your line of questioning is going to be.
My line of questioning is to get a direct answer to a simple question.
And I've given you about as simple of an answer as you can get, Rich.
So you're not going to answer the question?
There's a trail on our property along the entire piece, all the way out to Route 30.
Did, did University of Pennsylvania, and you specifically, agree to move, to take the trail off of the school district property onto that property?
We are happy to take any portion of the trail that can be relocated to our side, they're welcome to use our property.
And you agree, and you agreed to do that?
It's there, Rich.
So you have done it.
Hey, gentlemen, Rich, Rich.
You did do.
Rich, you are out of, you're out of order now.
No, no.
You're out of order.
Do you see a trail?
I do not see a trail.
Okay.
What I'm asking you to do, what I'm asking you to do is to say, you've taken the trail, you've ta...
Please pay attention.
No, I don't, I...
Rich, here's the trail.
Dave.
I'm showing you.
You are saying that you took the trail, the school district is not going to build a trail on their side, it's going to be on your side.
So, Rich, here's an idea.
No, I'm asking you what you committed to.
Rich, it is enough.
I'm asking the question.
It's enough.
You're not, you're not answering the question.
I've answered every question you've answered.
You're not answering the question. You're not answering the question.
This is definitely in a, this is definitely in a...
I can't see more than answering the question.
I know. I hear, I hear it. Rich, your line of questioning, he is answering it. Your line of questioning is, is, you're completely incorrect with what you're saying.
I'm absolutely correct.
Incorrect, and I, please explain to me how your line of question has anything to do with what is, what is before us right now.
We have to, we have a caucus on a financial subdivision. Did they comply with all of their commitments? The answer is no. They have not agreed to take the trail from the school district. They committed that they would, the school district would not build a trail on its side its side of the street. And there's two issues with that trail. One, there was a trail proposed on the school district property. The school district required the township to keep that trail clear of snow and to maintain it being open. That was a new, new commitment.
Which I think what you're saying is completely out of, out of order.
I'm explaining to you, Lisa, you asked me to explain to you.
Perhaps we need to ask Mr. Norsini, who has been working with this and knows, and presented, what, just last week, I believe, at the Facilities Committee for the School Board, Mr. Norsini? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, ma'am. Uh, yes.
Please, can you shed some light?
The underlying...
Steve, do we still have a trail on the school district property which we would be required to maintain?
Rich, will you let Mr. Norsini answer?
Will you let me talk and then stop yelling?
No.
You're being, you're lacking civility.
I am not going, you're not, you are being insubtle.
President Kaborowski, you're lacking civility. Now, please.
Please, Mr. Booker, allow Mr. Norsini to answer the question.
Please, because we're not getting any response from counsel.
So, so a few points. So the, the underlying plan that you see above you was a plan that was approved by the Board of Commissioners through land development. Penn Medicine did agree to extend that trail underneath the Blue Root and out to 30. The Radnor Tap Trail, which was presented very briefly at the Radnor Township's School District Facilities Meeting in its current form, is shown on school district, school district property paralleling Route 30 and King of Prussia Road.
And that, with that tap trail was to be by agreement from Penn to move to that property?
No. I, I am not aware of any agreement on that, sir.
That's, that's, that was, that was what the agreement. And Dave, are you saying that that is not the agreement? You never committed to it and you refused to do that tap trail on the Penn property? Yes or no? That's a yes or no question?
Don't answer that.
Let, let, let the record show, let the record show counsel refused to answer the question.
Are there any other, are there any other commissioners? Are there any other commissioners?
I want, one more, one more.
Who have any...
One more question. So, so Steve, that tap trail remains on the school district property and per the agreement, the township will be required to keep that clear and maintain this...
So by, so there's federal money involved with the tap trail. So at this point in time, until the safety review and all, and a few other PennDOT processes are complete, we are not allowed, specifically not allowed to talk about easements with any property owners, one being the school district. So sometime in the next few months, once PennDOT goes through this review process, then the township would reach out to the school district because we do require an easement in some areas. And my assumption is that topic would be part of those discussions.
Well, we already agreed. We have written document where we agreed to do that. So it's not an easement issue, it's a maintenance issue.
Well, I mean, it being that it could be part of an easement agreement, an official part of an easement agreement.
Why is it that we don't move the tap trail onto, across the street?
We're not here to discuss the tap trail. We're not here to discuss the Penn...
This is caucus, this is caucus. We're here to discuss any issue related to this financial, they're before us for a financial subdivision. The school district and trustees agreed that, that it would move. Why not do that? Is there something prohibiting us from doing that, Steve?
Actually, Peter Simone...
Dave said that they would, they were happy to have it.
Peter Simone presented on this several times and actually when we walked the school district property this summer with various, uh, school board members and the principal as well as the superintendent, uh, there were several reasons why this did not go the other side. First off, we're very far through the design process. If this were to change at this point, I don't, Peter did not know what could happen in the project. It could endanger the whole project because we're, this is what the grant was based on. Secondly, there are very, there are some very severe site constraints on the eastern property, on the east side of that, of King of Prussia Road, in that there's a drainage basin there, there's a creek, so there's considerable issues. And then there's still the crossing to get over there. Peter and I, and I'm just giving you the back of the cocktail napkin version. Peter Simone presented on this, um, pretty much in detail, but that, that's not, to be honest, that's not part of this. That was part of the tap trail. This is, is a different...
Well, this is a subdivision and this is an issue related to the property and, and this issue has been raised to me that this was a commitment by Penn and that they're not fulfilling that.
I'm just saying this, this was approved, the underlying plan, so just add...
Well, Steve, and Steve, and, and, Steve and Bob, in your opinion, would it not be in the township's interest to have this tap trail relocated across the street? Just if nothing else, with respect to the maintenance of that property, we'd no longer have that obligation.
Madam President? From my recollection here, and maybe others can see if I'm correct or not, I believe the Penn Medicine Trail that was on there was an ask by the board because of the overall master plan of the trails, that there is a connector that goes across that would actually take that trail over towards, um, 320 in Lancaster Avenue. And they had agreed that they would actually put that trail connector in. So I believe this was, this is entirely two separate, separate items. The trail that you see on here was an ask by the board to continue the trail actually heading would be east. That would, then what Villanova did is they actually widened the sidewalk on the, Steve, north side of the street.
Hi, sir. New sidewalk.
North side of this, where they widened it. So that incorporated the trail. So this would be the connector to take it from there all the way across up to that part of the trail, which is in front of Villanova, which at first they said no, but Villanova then actually did the trail. So I believe this, this is...
This is, I'm asking about something different.
Two, yeah, it is two separate, separate items.
I'm, I'm, again, the school district has raised with people, certain representatives from the school district have raised with me the concern that that tap trail will take out many trees and will be onerous and burdensome to the school district. And further was relayed to me that the University of Pennsylvania agreed to relocate the trail to their side. And what I'm hearing from Attorney Falcone is that they will do that, but that they have not done that here. And I'm asking, will they do it and will we see it and will you pursue it or won't you? And if you won't, why?
Well, I think from, Dave, if I, if I may...
Sure, absolutely.
I think for Steve to explain, I think Peter looked at this because the original plan, we would have loved to have taken that over on the Penn side, but I believe because of that stormwater basin that's there, and Steve, you can tell me right or wrong, but then also too, the terrain that's there with what would have to be built.
Pedestrian bridges and, and honestly, Commissioner, to your point, we discussed this Tuesday night, this would actually be, if this trail goes in, this would relieve the, the school district from some liability. Their current sidewalk is not in the greatest of shape. So there's maintenance that's required on there. That would all go away with a brand-new trail. So that portion of liability, cost, maintenance for their sidewalk would leave. The trees, our arborist did a tree report. So the trees, especially the ones over by the playing field, they have root girdling, they're not in good shape. So replacing those trees, most of the trees that are going to be removed are either declining at the end of near their useful life or had issues when they were planted. So again, not saying this would happen tomorrow, but those trees would eventually have to be removed by the school district. They would be removed as part of this project and replanted. So we'd be reforesting this for the next generation. So, uh, Peter did a very good job of explaining to the district that this will actually relieve some liability and some cost for the district moving forward by this project going through.
Well, that may be true or may not. I would argue that that's not the case. The sidewalk is going to remain. They're not going to take the sidewalk out, but if, maybe they will.
Rich, did you, Rich, did you walk the trail when, when they were giving us the opportunity to do that? Because I went and did that. Did anyone else do that? I know John has done it, um, and walked the trail with Peter to fully understand.
Point, point of order. The issue was that, the agreement was is that that would move. And I believe it would be beneficial to the township as well to have that trail. And, and also, why, why do we want to have two trails on both sides of King of Prussia Road?
Right.
So, so, so again, I, what, I'm not getting an answer to this question. The, the issue is, why don't we move it over and the engineer says, well, we got it drawn and we don't want to do it? And even though Penn says that they would?
There's, I told you, Commissioner, there's severe site constraints. There's a drainage basin over there. There's another pedestrian bridge that would be required over there. There was, a huge part of this trail is the safe, the PennDOT review process is the safety review. And there was large concern with crossing over to the other side at that intersection. So you would still need the trail on the north side of 30 to proceed east or west. When you got to King of Prussia Road, that intersection was also a concern from a safety standpoint. So coming from me, I, the answer is not, well, we don't want to change it. That was one of the things Peter brought up. But those three other items were very severe items that, why, when we went to visit the trail, they were pointed out and they were reiterated, I believe, at two school district facilities meetings and at three meetings on the site.
Well, again, it all makes sense, but that's not what the agreement was and, and it was never brought to us.
All right, point of order, Rich.
Stop, stop interrupting me.
No, no.
I'm going to just interrupt you, so we'll go back and forth. We're going to have to shut down the mic.
Rich, you have exhausted this line of questioning.
I have exhausted, you've exhausted me.
You have absolutely exhausted this line of questioning. There, if there are issues to be dealt with, with this trail, Mr. Norsini, Mr. Norsini continues to deal with the school district on it. Mr. Zankowski is dealing with the school district on it. And that is where this lies right now.
It's not where it lies. Where this lies, where this lies right now is there was a commitment.
This has nothing to do...
There was a commitment by the applicant to, to take this and they have failed to do it. And that's, that's where we are. So that's it.
So, so the answer to his question is no.
No, what?
So let's move, so let's move on to the next topic, please.
Is there anyone?
Thank you.
Are there, are there any?
One, one, one more issue.
Are there any other commissioners that have any questions for Mr. Falcone?
I have another, another question. And remember, this is caucus, this is caucus. There's no vote tonight. There's no caucus.
Mr. Booker.
Let him ask his next question.
Will we be, will we be provided a copy of the lease for review? And if not, why not?
Because you're not entitled to getting a lease.
So Penn refuses to provide a copy of the lease on, on this, the leaseback.
Hey, your question has, your question has been asked. Your question has been asked and answered.
And I just want to make it clear that Penn is refusing to provide a copy of the lease with brainwash.
And answered.
Why, why would you not provide a copy of the lease? Because we're not entitled?
Leases are ordinarily free to...
I don't know if we're entitled or not, but may, may we get a copy? May we get a copy?
Certainly, I can certainly request my client provide one.
Well, would you, you would do that then?
Oh, of course.
Okay.
Question has been asked and answered.
Not entitled is not where you're going to go with.
Question?
So you're not entitled to it, but I'm happy to ask him for it.
Well, why didn't you say that in the first place? Please, please ask for it. I would, I would like to get that.
All right, gentlemen, gentlemen, Commissioner Booker, your question was asked and answered. Do you have another question? Okay. Does anyone else have a question?
I have another question. When will we be able to see that lease? Before, oh, here's my final question. My final question for Peter. I see that this is coming up as a final, H. Peter. This is coming up as a final, this is coming up as a final. Why is there not a preliminary, preliminary subdivision?
Because there's nothing to review preliminarily.
Well, the lease for one.
It makes no sense to, to make it preliminary final.
There's a lease.
It doesn't matter. The lease is not, we have no control over the lease. We have no right to impose any conditions upon the lease. We have no right to look at the lease at all. It has nothing to do with our review of the subdivision.
So that's, that's, so, so the question...
Question asked and answered.
No, no, Lisa.
Question asked and answered.
My constituents, I, I'm elected and I'm, I'm going to continue this. Listen, we do have an interest in understanding the lease. Why would we want, not want to pursue that? If we have no right to do any kind of a review, why are they before us, Peter?
Because they're subdividing the land pursuant to our ordinance.
And, and what you're saying is we have no right to change anything or ask any questions.